Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Darrell, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, take care of the dissent agenda and then we'll go right into our committee meeting. Take a motion on the dissent agenda.
I'll make a motion except for the dissent agenda. Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay, folks, we've got a public hearing tonight. And what we're going to discuss in this hearing and take it more of your inputs than really our discussion points as the school committee members, and that is the school calendar. And what we're looking at and want your inputs on is school year start, pretty much in the simplest terms, pre-Labor Day, post-Labor Day, vacations that are involved. There's been work on start times also for the various grades, the four buildings, it's a switch start time based on the child's age. And then pretty much anything that you're going to want to talk about as we go through the calendar. Surely I expect some discussion on half-days also be part of this, and then what kind of holidays we do take during the course of the year. We take February, for example, and then April also. You know, some people talk about, you know, a single one in March. But anyways, it's your inputs, it's your opportunity, please. And this is the beginning of a process. There's not going to be any fundamental change, even for the calendar for September of 14. So the next school year, we don't anticipate, as I say, a fundamental change. But might, would it be, look, come September of 15, which will be different. And that's why I want to have this process. It's going to take us a bit of time, opportunity to collect information, both in these forums, public hearings, and then certainly also through emails to us, surveys, other forums, student councils, school improvement councils, the principals, any way you want to get input to us, and we'll work with it. And we'll see if we can come together as a community, what works best for all of us in Littleton, what serves the educational needs of the children, the students in our district, and then also frankly, a total town, if you will, solution on how we go about that. So I'm just going to ask any of my board members if they want to have any opening comments also, and then we're going to open up to you folks, here if you'd like to tell us. Alex, you want to start?
I'm just looking forward to hearing. We've been getting quite a bit of input already, and you can tell that this is always one of the hot button issues. But, you know, we've been getting more email on this in a short period of time than we put it out for public discussion than anything I've seen in the recent past. So it will be, it should be a deliberate process because it obviously requires that based on the amount of input we're already getting. So it should be an interesting process.
Yeah, no, I think this will be an interesting process, even within the Baker household, there's not agreement on these issues, so.
Is it a lose-lose situation for you, Darrell? Is that a lose-lose situation?
With that, we'd like to hear your comments, please, folks. We have a mic in the center, and when you come forward, please just say your name and address, and we'll have that for the record, and then please tell us what you think. Who wants to be first? Can't be much of a public hearing, the public doesn't speak.
This is common on school year start, right?
Yes.
When we start the school year, no matter...
Will you please put the microphone?
I can't. You can't hear me? I'm with a lot of people I know. Okay.
Thank you.
I guess my bigger point is this. This is about school year start, school year end date. It's not about extending the school day.
No.
And it's not about offering programs like full-day kindergarten, right?
It's not that those discussions can't come up in this. We're not limiting it. But certainly the primary purpose is to speak about when do we begin the year, when do we end the year, and pretty much anything in between. And if you had an opinion on full-day kindergarten, we're certainly willing to listen to it.
Oh, that's great. I do have an opinion on full-day kindergarten.
Okay.
As far as school day, school year start and school year end date, I think six of one, half dozen of the other. I work, I'm a high school English teacher, and we start August 19th, so I know how that cookie crumbles. I'm not opposed to it, but I think the community has to decide as a whole what would, what would work best for them. As a parent, I came tonight because I heard people talking about the extended school year. And I am an advocate of looking at changing the kindergarten program. My son is currently involved in kindergarten, and I find myself really disappointed in the lack of connection in curriculum and meaning for students between the morning program and the afternoon program, and the fact that the school has married itself to the common core, which the state has, which is an enormous curriculum, and we're trying to squeeze that into a small amount of time when it seems like it's a full-day schedule. But that's where I stand on that. I guess that's what I have to say.
And just for the record, your name and address.
My name's Eileen Wieda Gardner, and I live on Maplehurst.
Thanks, Eileen. Anybody else, please? Can't be a public hearing if the public doesn't speak. Yeah, how about that?
I have to, I'll get up, but I'm not particularly good at this.
No, you're too fine.
Close to, I just stand to this. That's good. Colleen Feltes, I live at Great Road in Littleton. I have four kids in the district, and I came down here today just because I had heard not too many people were showing up. You had a previous meeting. And I was just interested in what y'all were thinking about and what was going on. As far as the beginning of the school year, I like the idea of having a summer vacation that seems kind of traditional. But obviously, we need to get in all of the schoolwork that needs to be put in, and I have to admit, I really don't like pushing into July for vacation to start. In our house, we don't have a lot going on during the vacation weeks, so if there was modification made to that February and April vacation, that wouldn't, I mean, I could see that as being a way to trim some days and off and having days for curriculum to be covered. I think that's pretty much most everything I've been thinking about.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Paul, I have a quick question for you. Could you discuss, a couple weeks ago, some of the legality of it? Do you know offhand if there's any law preventing us from changing those February or April vacations if we wanted to, which I'm not saying, you know, we do, but...
Not that I'm aware of. I do know there's one district in southern Mass. that is actually moving to that type of offering next year.
Okay. Good note. Thank you.
Folks who have just arrived, we're in the public session, please.
My name's Eric Dunn, New Estate Road. I feel that after Labor Day has always seemed the traditional time. I gawk when I see schools starting a week before that. And it's sort of nice because then makes vacationing that week a little more affordable nowadays. But I, when I was in school in New York, they, we'd never extended past that June 20th, 21st, 22nd, and they just, extra snow days always came in spring break. So I think that would be maybe a way to look at where we keep the school year in a certain boundary. If it was bad, not pushing into July, which I know last year messed up our, beginning of our summer vacation plan, so you lose-lose and win-win, so that's my two cents.
Thanks, Eric.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. What are we proposing?
We're listening, we're not proposing. We've talked about some of the options that certainly would be available, pre and post Labor Day, obviously, as far as the start, how that impacts the end of the year, February, April vacation combined, any of the other holidays that we have in there, half-days, as you heard, just a little bit of discussion also about kindergarten, some concerns there. So certainly, when it comes to the school calendar, it's Vegas freestyle. We want to hear all your inputs on it. And we did say, for some of the folks that did arrive a little bit late, is we're not looking at any fundamental changes for September 14th. So in other words, this next school year. We may take around the margins here as what we learn and any ways to improve the calendar. And if, were changes by this committee were to be made, it'd be looking forward into September of 15. And those changes are going to be based on educational efficacy for the children, certainly. And then what is a total town solution? What works best for all of us here in Littleton? And keep, and certainly as primacy, the, as I say, the educational aspects for children.
Well, just in terms of nobody coming up to the mic, one input that I had received from somebody just verbally there, and I just thought I'd pass it on for, you know, for the discussion purposes, was, you know, we use, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, the number of half-days that we have there, the scheduling of them throughout the thing, can we do things about that? We talked briefly about that before. One other comment that was made was considerations of maybe using like half-day Friday, so that maybe that would be better for parents' scheduling in terms of how they may plan their weekend time versus in the middle of the week. It was just an input that I'd received from a person that, you know, didn't write a letter or didn't, you know, come to the meeting tonight. But I just wanted to just throw out, there's other options also, I think, in terms of us looking at, you know, the spectrum of calendar-type changes that we might be thinking about.
That approach may also have less of an impact because it doesn't, you know, stop the school week halfway through and then start it up. You know, you have most of your education time all in a row consecutively rather than taking that half-day break on Wednesday. So that's another perspective I've heard on that idea.
Folks.
It would be nice to see a consistent decision. For example, this week alone, as a parent with, you know, as a parent, talking to other parents, having students from half-day Wednesday and a half-day Thursday, that throws things off. It'd be better to know like, okay, it's going to happen the second and third, you know, second and fourth Wednesday, or the first and third Wednesday of every month, and there's a consistency in that. Just to be honest, from the Facebook pages I've seen, a lot of parents want to see something, you know, where it's full-day professional development, kids have off or whatnot. I'm not married to that one day or one way or another. I just think that, I think that people want for a certain level of consistency where you can, it's not, it feels sometimes like guesswork, like is today half-day, and you're going to go look at the calendar and try to figure it out, and then it becomes, as a parent that works full-time, a juggling act.
Come up to the mic, please, so that it'll pick up where they take place.
Hi, it's Latre Jones, Nine Brook Lane, so I'm supposed to... One of the things that I've heard the teachers talk about from the AP perspective that would be in favor of starting earlier is that the kids are behind other districts for the time they need to do the AP prep work because that doesn't change. And schools that start a week earlier, we start basically behind, and then the kids are working on nights and weekends, which is fine. They may still need to do that, but I've heard the teachers that are teaching those classes talk about that, as a concern.
Mr. Merrill, can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so as someone who's hardly taken a couple AP classes, I definitely second that, because I think it's sort of unfair to our teachers right now that they have to make up essentially for material that we could have covered if we had an extra week before the AP exams, and, you know, like, like Mr. Miss Guinness stays after for three hours every single Friday with us, which is incredible and super-nice and really valuable, but it would, you know, be kind of nice, I think, for everyone if we could do that stuff in class, you know?
Okay. Good, thank you. Looking at some of the new folks we haven't seen before, if they'd like to come forward. Even if it's just ask a question. If you don't have a comment, but you want to ask us a question, please do. Go ahead, Lisa.
Huh? Yeah, I actually, I gotta go to the mic though. I know. Lisa Boone, I apologize, I came in late, so I don't know if this was already addressed, the half-days. I, I've heard more than once from actually teachers even, that half-day professional development could be better utilized if it were a full day. They could potentially do more, and I don't think that half-days are easier for parents, especially if you have younger children, it's especially difficult. Older children, maybe they can be home alone for part of the time, or they have other things, but I would love to see a change in that, or at least really discussed. And I'd love to hear what the, you know, what the teachers think, and if they do, and the administrators, if they do feel that would be beneficial.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
I've done some polling myself of different, different groups, and to kind of respond to Lisa's comment about teachers. Actually, the feedback that I've gotten, regardless of the body that I've asked, has really been down the, right down the line, 50-50. Some people want it before for various reasons, some people want it afterwards for various reasons. So the benefit to the AP prep, certainly, that's something that I can, I can sink my teeth into and say, you know, that we need to look at that because if we're disadvantaging, putting our students at a disadvantage to other districts or other children that are taking the AP exams, then I think that's worth looking at. But I've heard everything from, you know, that the buildings are warmer in June than they are in August, and so there's a lot of that out there, and it's really 50-50. It's down the middle. And I will say that I was up at the high school for a while this afternoon and pulled some of the teachers up there, again, 50-50. It's, it's really, it's, what I'd love to see, is I'd love to see people coming forth with some, some evidence that is going to impact the educational value. Without that, it's a convenience thing. And I don't, I don't belittle that at all because with five kids, with a Wednesday, Thursday, half-day, you know, two days in a row, you know, I happen to be homesick, my wife took time off, so it's, it was, it's a challenge. We do publish the schedules as early as we can in order to help parents to make that adjustment, but in reality, you know, it's a surprise to me on Monday morning when I wake up and look at the calendar and say, oh, this is the week with two half-days. But I, I just want to put it out there for anybody that's done any restructuring, we've gotten, I know each of us is, our email kind of blew up today for folks that couldn't be here tonight. And I would say that, you know, much of that was kind of down the middle as well. And if anybody has spoken with friends or family in other districts where they do it differently than we do it, and they have some evidence where there are benefits, please bring that forward, you know, not just the folks in the room, but the folks at home as well. We want this, that's the reason for us doing this, and that's the reason we're going to continue to do this kind of, this format, and you have these types of venues for folks to come forward and present that information to us so that we can make a decision that's, that's not the way that we believe, but it's how we can best benefit the children and the, to the point, the community as a whole. Ms. Boone?
I'm up again. So as far as the half-days go, I have one more addition, which I think is food for thought. And again, this is something that would be, it would be nice to hear from the administrators and the staff because I think they're amongst it more. But I know at the middle school and the high school, certainly, it is difficult to get, depending on how they decide to compress the day, difficult to get much work done if you're just compressing and you're having shortened periods. They don't get an awful lot done, as well as it disrupts the unified arts schedules and those types of things with half-days that they have to then try to work around. So again, just food for thought. It would be really nice to get input from the schools themselves and their opinions on that, if they can schedule better, if it's a full day off, and then they can, you know, it can be placed appropriately and thoughtfully so that it impacts, you know, again, the education as little as possible. And then I have a whole nother, vacations. This may not be popular, but I really, with all of the snow days that we are dealing with, you know, you're considering an earlier start time. Something else that I would love to discuss is to change school vacations. We have just always had February and April vacations, and I know in other parts of the country, because I have friends who live there, they don't have the February vacation. They have a long weekend, a four-day weekend over that holiday weekend in February, and then they have another long weekend over the holiday weekend, or they create a long weekend in March, and then they have a later April or an April vacation, or potentially a week off in March, which is some of the private schools do, and then a long weekend in April, and then you kind of split it up. Because I know, my feedback from my kids is, March is the longest month because there's not a single holiday. So, you know, but I know that's really putting it out there because most schools don't do that. But it may be beneficial if we're already dealing with snow days in these months and losing time, and now we're trying to figure out how to not have to go to school so late into June. If, if starting earlier doesn't seem like what you want to consider, maybe we should consider a shortened vacation in February. And, and then that would potentially give us an extra three days if we only had a four-day weekend, and one of them's already a holiday. That would reduce off of the end of the year, you know?
Thank you.
Can I ask Superintendent Clenchey why we do half-days versus full-days?
Sure.
For professional development?
The current law in the state of Massachusetts in terms of school-year calendars works on school days. So if we have full-day PD days, we would have to add those days to the calendar. But we currently have 12 half-days. Or no, we have more.
Seventeen.
Twelve.
Twelve PD.
Professional development, specific to professional development, we have 12, so that would be six days that we would have to add to our calendar.
And pay teachers six full-days of salary in order to maintain 180 days for students in the...
So what you're saying is that the half-day counts as a day?
Yes, it does.
Ah, there's the paradox.
And there's multiple reasons for half-days? Whenever there is two half-days in a week, it's not for professional development, we have junctures for common.
Right. As Kelly did say, as far as state law, and you may say, well, half-day counts a full-day, that seems bogus.
Yeah.
We may have some sympathy sitting right here in front of you on that.
In terms of what my kid is getting educated to that day, I'd have to say.
But when we were looking at making up days, when we had the very heavy storms and we closed the high school and the middle school for two additional days because of snow on the roof, what, four years ago now, one of the options we were looking at to try and make that time up was maybe add an hour to the day. And the state said no. You may recall the ice storms, a little bit, well, outside of 495 really, those few years back, where some communities were severely hit for weeks, not just a couple extra days. And they were looking at various things like that, and the commissioner would not give them relief. And things like that, said, well, can we add an hour to the day, and we're getting the educational interface with the students? Nope, a day is a day, period, dot.
They allowed Shaker Lane to do that one year, when they initiated Shaker Lane, they extended the day.
Different tradition, everybody.
I can't recall, you know, my time.
No, I just, I remember it because I was a student.
A long time ago. Eleven years ago.
They did offer respite on MCAS for one of those situations, but not in terms of the school calendar.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not that both the Superintendent's Association in the state and also the School Committee Association in the state haven't been lobbying with the commissioner to look at some of those changes that may allow something like that. So those things aren't taking place, but as we stand right now, and that's why we haven't offered that option. We just don't have it available to us.
Yeah, without knowing that, I would have thought, you know, 12 half-days equals six days.
Yeah.
That seems same-saying to me. I thought the same thing. Who knew? Thank you.
Yeah, and Chuck just brought up a good point, too. There's also a combination of total hours that are involved there also. So that's why a half-day doesn't really tube this process because it's days and then the total hours, it's a combination of the two.
What is the total hours for Shaker Lane? It's around 9:40, right?
Hey, Kelly.
It's 9:90.
9:90.
It's 9:90.
We're actually over that.
Okay. So it's 9:90. People are questioning that on Facebook, saying one of the most active state-level 900, and they're like, what's that?
They have the figures.
Yeah.
They're in the, they're on the line in the front page of our school improvement plans to actually see if it's available or isn't available.
Yes, they are. Where are the school improvements? Because I couldn't find...
There, yeah.
Go ahead.
If you go to the district website.
Okay.
On the left-hand side, you can pull down the...
Okay, I was flipping through last...
I can save my...
That's okay.
Other inputs, folks.
The only other thing I'll add to the, I'm talking about how many days, how many hours, that all has to be done by June 30th as well.
Good point. Is the number of professional development days in teacher contract as well? I mean, is that all part of it, or is that really just, how does that work?
It's part of the contract.
It is, so it's explicitly laid out in there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just...
Total number of school days, 181, is what we have. Teachers' workdays, 180 days, as you know, for students, and the teachers are 181 days by contract. And everybody remember, too, when we say 181, that's not like half 365 or so, 181 workdays. So it's much more than a half-year. I want to make sure that's clear.
But it includes the number of professional development days and things like that?
One thing to Chuck's earlier comments regarding the AP scores, looking at those, at those February and April vacation times, those are both two weeks where, again, those two weeks could be spent on, on the AP exams. Now unfortunately, the AP exams are what, in May and, and June, and I think offering a May or June vacation after the exams wouldn't be that productive either, but it's, you know, food for thought. Having those two weeks there, if we, if we somehow were able to make it one week, that would give students one whole extra week to work on, you know, setting for the AP exams, or for MCAS, or whatever standardized test they'll be taking in lieu of MCAS in a couple of years.
Maybe, yeah.
Right, depending what happens. And the other point that, you know, I've heard suggested to me, if we did go to full-day PD days, if there was some way we could interface with Park and Rec so that there could be Park and Rec programs that would supplement instead of simple childcare, there might be a program going on that might be productive for the students.
They do do some of that already. They have field trip...
On the half-days?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been doing that, actually.
Excellent, excellent.
And on all of those stuff.
Excellent. I think that's very helpful. What would be the cost of, of moving to those six full-day days? I think you had estimated about $60,000 a year.
Yeah, plus a little over $300,000.
$300,000.
What if you reduce the amount of days? You know, I mean, instead of six full professional development, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
You know, when you had four, maybe one a quarter, you can make four full professional development days, which would hopefully gain more ability to get something done and be, you know...
I think, five years ago, that, that might have been something feasible, but with the number of mandates that are coming down from the state and federal level, we're, we're just barely making it with professional development time. In fact, we would like more, but we know there are limits. Educator evaluation, core curriculum, park assessment, going to online assessment, I mean, there's a lot of, the strong learning curve that companies add, and again, keeping up with best practice takes time, and we need opportunities to continue to train our staff in best practices as they emerge.
I appreciate that. I'd actually prefer more professional development, if we could somehow figure out how to make it feasible.
Anybody else? Yes, Eileen.
I know that it's, yeah, I've seen it happening in some other states, and we've seen it with the Greenfield Virtual School. Is there a way for the district to, to edge in on the idea of not losing, you know, these snow days or whatnot through virtual learning? Like, you're seeing more and more and more of that pickup. Can we jump on ahead of that curve? I know a lot of the schools have iPads, like, I just, I don't know what ends up being an accessibility issue for parents, what if... accessibility issue for parents, what ends up being an accessibility issue for the school, and if, you know, the mandates coming down from Chester say you can get there or not.
And you bring up another option. In fact, somewhat a hybrid of what you just described, is there's districts, and it's going to vary by a percentage, but on a snow day, if 80% of the students can accomplish some pre-arranged tasks, lessons, if you will, it counts as school day. Even, you know, they're all at home, but they will have accomplished what had been prepared for them, you know, whether it's through online, that you have syllabus all set for this. But there are certainly many options. And that's what this is about. This is brainstorming, is what we're doing here. Notice, at least I hope we haven't come across any idea that you may have put out and said, no, we don't want to do that, because that's not the case at all. Bring them all in, and we'll work through this, and as I said at the beginning of this hearing, this is just day one as we go through this, and it's going to be many months that we do, before we make any sort of decision. So it won't happen soon. And as I said, certainly this September 14 school year will not be any fundamental changes. If they were to occur, it'll be the following year, '15.
Well, that's kind of an interesting concept, because if we integrate doing flipped classrooms, then those lessons are already there, right? To be able to take advantage of something like that.
And we do have to consider the spectrum of learners in our district. Not to mention that we have six-year-olds, and we have a variety of levels of learning. So, I mean, there's a lot of technological advancement, and there are a lot of ways to teach children. And what, like, as someone with a second grader, who I think is advanced, like, playing with their children, I'm not sure he's going to do a flipped classroom experience without two parents helping him forget one. So, I mean, we do have to have, you know, some careful conversation, but a petition on some of this stuff, too.
Right now, we're gathering data.
Yeah.
Information. For folks at home and watching us, and that have sent letters to the school committee, certainly every letter I've received has been shared with the entire school committee and the superintendent. I'd like to show you that. And the promise is, anything that you do, send any one of us, we share amongst ourselves those letters. So please keep them coming. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Okay? All right. Thank you for coming this evening, folks. Hope you stay around, because...
I was just going to say, you mentioned earlier that you may have the superintendent do some additional research on the other things there. I think one piece there, people have asked also about all the holidays. So many of the holidays are specified by state law that we take, and in this town takes two separate holidays, holy days, there, in terms of just what goes into our calendar makeup there. So there are a few of them that we don't really have options available to us for changing either, which might be useful for, as we're discussing here, to present those back, too, is which ones are fixed dates that we have no say in changing also.
Right, actually, I was wondering about that, if there was any discussion about the possibility of removing the religious holidays, or if there's, what, if that's something that would be considered again, because I know some schools have done that.
Everything's on the table.
So yes, knowing which ones are fixed would be really helpful.
Okay. So, well, thank you, folks, and as I say, please do stay, because we're going to talk some budget items, and it gets really entertaining at that point. So, again, thank you, and we'll keep this process going, and there'll be more hearings such as this, future dates. Superintendent will be putting together a survey to send out to the community at large, so we get inputs that way also. I'll be working this for a while. Thank you, folks. Okay. I'm going to say, take a five-minute break, so that we can prepare. Okay? So let's just take five minutes, and we'll actually make it six, and start right back up at 7:10, okay?
Okay.
Okay, folks, we're going to gin it up again, please.
Do you just change?
Everybody?
You need a cap on this.
I did, yeah. Okay. Anybody, right now, it's 7:10, so does anybody have any comments from very interested citizens? Yes, ma'am?
Could you tell me what the agenda is? Because I thought, like, at 7:10, we're going to have the Edwin Analytics.
Yes, because we ran a little over. What we want to do is, because we have FinCom and Selectman here also, so we'll talk a little bit about the budget, and then we'll get into the analytics.
Oh, okay.
Interested citizens, any others? Okay, folks, tonight, we have the pleasure of having Chairman Glady from the FinCom, and Brian Tomfoxx also from the FinCom, and Board of Selectmen Jim Carr, Councilman McCurdy, and Town Administrator Keith Bergman joining us tonight. We all know we've been working on the budget here recently, and we're real close to being able to come to town meeting with a budget that everybody's going to be happy to present, or at least will all be agreeable to present, to the town as a whole. We're going to do a little bit more work on that this evening, and that's why these gentlemen are here with us this evening. And we're going to see if we can actually get some numbers from a gap that the town as a whole has, and we all participate in that through the expenses we have in the school department along with the rest of the expenses of the town. And we're going to see what we can do together to bring that gap. If we get it to zero tonight, we're all heroes. If not, well, maybe tomorrow we'll be heroes. How about that? Okay. Gentlemen, what I'd like to do this evening on this is, I'm going to run through a couple of slides, please. We think it's just a couple of opportunities for us to make sure we all have the same sheet of music, so to speak, as we're speaking this evening. The numbers are derived certainly from some of the stuff we've done internally in the school departments, but then also from Bonnie, Assistant Town Administrator for Finance. So we'd like to go through those slides and then discuss, as I said, we see that there's a gap, and what can we do this evening to help close that gap as best as possible? So the town budget as proposed right now, as I say, according to Bonnie, is $36,725,283. Couple meetings back, at school committee, we voted as a school committee for an appropriated budget, and that's the amount that would come out of town appropriation, not our revolving funds that are available to the school committee, to $16,950,000. Now, that math at the bottom there is not a subtraction of those two numbers. What it is, is according to, again, Bonnie, our Town Administrator for Finance, that's the gap that exists as of yesterday, of expected revenues for the town and expected expenditures based on the proposed budgets of various towns, excuse me, town departments, to include the school department. Next, please. So just looking back as to what last year looked like, what this year looked like, for the, excuse me, the fiscal years, you can see the town appropriation, again, that's what the town committee votes on, excuse me, town meeting votes on. The revolving fund, we call it the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker is a reimbursement that the state provides to a school district based on special education, and it's a formula-based reimbursement. And it goes like this. It starts off with four times what it costs for regular education in the district, and then at some percentage thereafter. The law calls for 75%. Rarely is 75% ever achieved. It's always something less. Just because I'm going to do public math here, so I'm going to keep it as simple as possible. If regular education were $10,000 per student, $40,000 would have to be expended first in the special education on a particular student, and then whatever's beyond that at that percentage. As I said, state law does say 75%, but rarely has it ever been 75%. It's been down to the 40%. So you can see, we will have spent quite a bit of money before any money even comes, comes back to the town. But it's in a revolving fund, because it's money in and it's money out, and that's how we use it. And we're able to use some of it towards the budget, and that's what we've done. You can see in '14, we did $547,000. This year, we proposed $500,000. And you can see the difference in the increase both percentages and in dollars, or decrease, as the case may be. Next, please. Now, when we look at the revolving fund and the total of the budget, we see we have $503,000 increase total from '14 to '15, and that's the total budget that we'd be using. And that would have us at $17,000, excuse me, $17,450,000 for FY '15 as a total. Next, please. The circuit breaker reimbursement we spoke of, what it ended up being was a little over $1 million for this current fiscal year, FY '14. And that little bit note about it being late, $264,000 of it just arrived later than normally anticipated, but it's available for use in this upcoming fiscal year. As we look into the future, fiscal year '15, which we fully anticipate, and then the projection for '16, you see those two numbers are flat, and considerably less than what we'd be receiving this year. So what we want to be concerned about is, how much of this circuit breaker would we spend this year? And we have various options on how to spend that. We'll discuss here in a moment those options on how to use that $1 million. And what does that do to the overall budget of the school department? What does it do to the overall budget of the town? And then how do we work it so that we don't find ourselves in a square corner, I haven't spent too much money this year, and not being able to carry enough money over into the following year? Next. Now you see a blank slide purposely, because a couple of the options we have is to prepay special education tuition to audit district organizations. Case of the collaborative we belong to primarily, that's the largest one we use, that's for students who we cannot accommodate in district, and they go outside of district perhaps. Now conversely, there's also other districts that can't accommodate their children, but in our town, we got a program that they can, and we bring those children here. So it's a bit back and forth, but ultimately more outflows because there's, we're a small district, and just can't take care of it all. So prepayment of the next fiscal year is one option for us. The other is keep it reserved, and I've called it a school appropriation buy-down. Right now, we talked about that there's a gap. So what can we do between the FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and the school committee this evening, is to bring that gap to as close to zero as we possibly can. What I'm going to ask, folks, is that, I'm going to ask the school committee members to make a couple of comments as they wish, and then let's just open up a general dialogue on some suggestions, and we'll take it from there. Anyway.
I just think the thing to keep in mind is, is that we have had some conversations at Board of Selectmen and FinCom last week. So this dialogue has already started. This is not the first time that we've, we've gone down this road. This is just sort of a continued part of the effort. And we've also had some meetings with the town admin, finance admin team as early as this, this past week. So, again, this is just an extension of the process we've already begun with.
Why don't you maybe, I just need another minute here to finish my thoughts. Sorry.
But thank you for pretty much laying it out there.
Enough time to get other thoughts?
Yeah, you know, well, I mean, there's a lot of email traffic that you CC'd us on in terms of the conversations there, and then this, this here lays out a few things here. I'm a little concerned in terms of where we go towards the future here. I mean, I think there's technically enough money in the account to take care of whatever problem we might be discussing tonight, but at the same time, I don't think it addresses where we need to be looking at long-term here. You know, in the past, the appropriation to the, to the schools has been relatively flat, and then last year, we had to do kind of a bump up to catch it up a little bit. This, this going forward, starving resources and then catching it up, I think puts us in a trap that I get concerned about in terms of as we hold the appropriation flat or even propose reducing it. Because if we reduce it, the jump that the town has to make next year in order for us to maintain the services that we're providing increases that much more on it, to the point that, you know, our budget, you know, will, will look like a substantial increase relative to the appropriation, and perhaps put it under scrutiny that is going to put us in a difficult position in terms of being able to, to maintain the services that we have. As I look at the school population items, we're not experiencing a reduction in the number of students that we're offering services to, regular education or special ed. In fact, I think the trends are special ed going up, and we might need to just validate that data, but I think it, it has been validated there. So in terms of some of the talk that we see on all of the town-wide budgets of level service and things like that, we, we are required to offer a specific level of service. and things like that, we are required to offer a specific level of service. And I'm concerned about when we start taking money out of that in order for us to actually maintain where we need to be. And, you know, like I said, if we take down that $200,000 or whatever it is, the specific number there, that's gonna be a huge gap next year when we hit the budget planning cycle. And where's that money gonna come from on it? And, you know, that's my primary concern with the discussion we're having tonight here. I know we talked about a couple of options. I think the one that was presented, and I think I pulled it out of the email that you forwarded here, we'd offered about trying to pull back our requested increase in appropriation to bring it down to, you know, notionally like the 2.5 percent level, so it was consistent with what the normal tax increase that we're passing on to all of the taxpayers, the 2.5 percent increase in the things there, not try to ask beyond what was gonna happen through growth of taxes there on it. I'm still very in faith, I'm comfortable with that there, reducing it further than that. I guess I would like to see what townwide we're doing to cut all the other budgets appropriations, you know, in comparable means there, because there's no place in our budget to continue taking service out, given that we're not experiencing a decrease in student population.
And I just want to comment that Darrell made a lot of good points, and I think it's also important to consider that in addition to the increasing need of services we need to provide, we also took cuts a couple of years ago. And though we've done our best to recover from that, there are certain numbers that make this, you know, a real situation that affects not just the numbers you see on these slides, but also every story behind those numbers. And that's something we all need to keep in perspective, is that behind every number is a story. And in our business, that means behind every number is a child, or a teacher, or a service, or a program. So it's not simply, oh, the schools have, you know, a ton of money. We don't. We have money that we put towards the programs we try to offer, and we try to do the best job we can. But it's not, you know, simply that, oh, you have $1 million to spend. Yeah, we do, but we have a lot of places we need to put that money. So it's not simply a case of, there's money we can just spread around really new. There's a lot of needs we have and a lot of things we want to do with that money.
And excellent points all around, but I would like to emphasize that there's been no input from either the FinCom or the Selectmen for us to cut services. We are looking not only at '15, we have to look at '16 also as to what may be available. And I'd use that term "square corner" that we may place ourselves in as we go through this. But certainly, we're not in a position that we'd be cutting services this year across the town. We're healthy enough that that's not an issue. As we roll into '16, could it become an issue? And those are the concerns that keep us awake a little bit as we go through this process right now.
Can I just make one point relative to the circuit breaker, too? When we did the budget and we had a $500,000, when we did our budget presentation two weeks ago, we showed that we were gonna use $500,000 in circuit breaker. In subsequent conversations, we've been talking with the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, we are gonna actually be required to use more than $500,000 of circuit breaker. And when we were originally going through the budget exercise over the course of the year, that wasn't something we were thinking about. That's a fairly new interpretation of how circuit breaker funds get used on a year-by-year basis. You basically have to expend, anything that you get in the previous fiscal year has to be expended by the end of the subsequent fiscal year. You can't build up a reserve, you have to spend it. Now, there is quite a bit of flexibility in how you spend it, and that's what we're, I think that'll be a big part of the conversation tonight. But at the end of the night, or at the end of this process, we know we will have, have to have spent down that circuit breaker account in one manner or another. The prepayment that you see up there, that bucket, that is one methodology for using it, that can be advantageous in terms of being able to look out, put your horizon beyond the current fiscal year, and think about ways that we might be able to, you know, benefit the town and the schools overall by implementing some strategies that are beyond the initial time horizon of this particular budget. But at the end of this, we will have had to spend that money.
One more question. We're talking specifically right now about circuit breaker, but we have another revolving fund, which is the School Choice Fund. We're spending a substantial amount of money out of that every year, too, also.
We have $250,000 that we use each year out of that. In the past, in the past couple of years, we've used a little bit more than that when we've needed to. But typically, we have built, in the, over the last 10 years, built in the budget, we've had about a two, between $2 and $250,000 a year that we direct right towards salaries. That's not part of our appropriation, and that's why we don't show it like that. But that also is a revolving fund in terms of money coming in, some money going out. It's been trending upward, and our balance continues in that fund, is growing each year, and we're projecting to have somewhere around $900,000 to $1 million in there at the end of FY '15, even with the usage that we have budgeted in there.
So in addition to the $550,000 that's on this sheet, we're planning another 200 out of that account also?
Yeah.
Okay. Paul, Ted, would you like to speak first, FinCom or the Selectmen?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So I think--
Sorry, Ted, can I just remember a quick, Kirby, are we okay with them being where they are? No, we're just gonna get your microphone. Just, this room's not as good as the room you guys use.
You're welcome to use--
Yeah. I think you do it, yeah. You guys are welcome to use your own, too.
Arm wrestle with the penny.
Okay. So I'd just like to echo what Mike said a little bit, is that, you know, this has been ongoing, and I'd like to see this going, and this has been a process, it has been working. It seems as though that we're in the same place we were last Monday night when we had the joint meeting, where we have a budget deficit, you know, overall town deficit of about $198,000. And I know there was, that's based on working together. And what I talk about as working together is there's gonna be, correct me if I'm wrong, there's gonna be $200,000 that is less gonna be used for, from School Choice Funds, but the circuit breaker is going to be increased. But both of those will hold reserves, which I support. I think the $282,000 that will hold in the reserves is a great idea. I mean, you're gonna have things come up. And I think we talked about last Monday that those would be used for prepayment if they're not used this year, which is really, at the end of the year, that's the only thing you can do with them. And so we find ourselves at this deficit right now, as far as we talked about last Monday, and we talked about there was gonna be some work done, and that happened on Monday, trying to bring that deficit together. And that there would just, there would seem to be no other wiggle room that we could really squeeze out another $200,000 from either town side or from school. So I think we have a solution here that's been proposed by staff, town hall staff, by Assistant Town Administrator, Town Accountant Bonnie, and to close that gap using local receipts that they're gonna be able to predict in the next few days, and then going forward, and they're holding that $98,000 out and trying to balance in September. I'm understanding that's what the plan is. Is that your understanding of the plan?
So when you talk about, when you say not using the $200,000 of School Choice, that was a topic that was discussed at a meeting that the town admin team had with our admin team that I happened, that I also attended. What we talked, we talked about it, and what we, what I hope was clear was that we would talk about that strategy tonight. That's not a decision I would ever--
Right.
--make, you know, in a vacuum, that, you know, that we can talk about that. I have some concerns about it after thinking about it, and we can talk about it in terms of if we, if we, if we don't spend $200,000, or let's call it $250,000. If we don't spend $250,000 out of School Choice, and we just take it out of revol, I mean, out of, out of Circuit Breaker, that's fine in one respect, but we have, we know how much money we need to spend. So if we take, if we don't spend it out of School Choice, we can add in $250,000 out of Circuit Breaker in the sense that it's there to use. And one reserve wouldn't go up as much as we thought, but another one would go up more, so it's kind of a net zero. But we need to spend what we, what we voted as an appropriation, plus what we use in the Circuit Breaker, plus what we're gonna use in School Choice. We need to spend as much as we said we were gonna spend. Otherwise, all of a sudden, we're gonna have to go back and say, well, wait a minute. We thought we were gonna do $17.7 million worth of services. Now it looks more like $17.5, what's going away? And we're really not contemplating making anything go away. You know, so we just gotta be careful about how, if we move money out of one bucket into another, as long as it's a net zero in terms of building up reserves, that's fine, but it also has to be a net zero effect on how much we're projecting to spend in order to provide the services leveling that we provided last year, and the staffing.
I can appreciate that, Mike. But your School Choice money, you can carry from year to year to year. And I think in the discussions on Monday, you know, the circuit breaker, using the $250 for the circuit breaker to bring the $500 to $750, you know, that money can't, it still leaves $282,000 in the circuit breaker account for any additional cost that may occur during the year, and still have the backup of the School Choice. And I think that leaving the School Choice where you have that option to carry it over to next fiscal year, as in the circuit breaker, you don't have that ability to do that per the law. If you keep that School Choice money in that bucket, so to speak, and your ability to carry it from one fiscal year to the next is, in my eyes, a benefit to not only the school department, but the town as a whole.
Right, that's true. But the problem is, is that if we do that, then the gap that we're talking about, that Bonnie's showing us, doesn't change. It's still the same gap. We haven't lessened the gap.
The $282?
What?
No, the $198? I wanna get it.
Yeah?
You're using the $198, Ted. And as I put in the slide, the first slide that Bonnie gave us, the information from Bonnie, $448,000.
Well, Mr. Chair, I may.
Yes, sir.
That was your original, based on your original school budget?
Correct.
Of $16,000, $16,900?
$950, yep.
$950, using the circuit breaker. Your revised request came back at $16,898 with a $660 circuit breaker use.
Actually, our revised actually came back, we did come back with another $90,000 to buy that down, which would've made it $16,860.
Okay.
And that, you can see that right there. Okay. So if, on the first page, if the gap is $448--
Right.
--and then we move 90, that goes down to $358. So, yep.
I think the number, the difference between the number at the gym side and the number that's up on the board tonight is what is that the number in Bonnie's memo to the Finance Committee on Tuesday night reflected the $16.7 million appropriation that came out of Monday's meeting with Mike and Kelly versus the number that's on the board tonight, which is $16.8 something. So that, I think that's where the difference is.
So that's, and that's fine, and we can talk about going to $16.7, which will pull that gap down, but not if it's by virtue of not spending money out of School Choice, and instead spending it out, because we have that $250,000 built in to spend already. And if you take it away and just move it into, take it out of a different bucket, we need to replace that somehow.
So what happened between Monday and tonight, that the extra $160,000, what does that represent? And I'm sorry if I'm late to the party on that. I mean, we had $16.7 on Monday, and now it's, the number up there now is $16,860. Look, there was discussions Monday morning. There was no agreement, Ted, Monday morning. I didn't say there was agreement. I'm saying how do we get from that, what's the difference between the $16.7 and the $16.8? That is not our memo. Now, how all those numbers came about exactly into the memo, we did not write the memo. Okay, what is being paid, what does that represent, the $160? Is-- I don't know, Ted.
Do we have what he's looking at? I'm not sure I know--
Should've gone out.
Well, there's the notes from Monday's meeting. When we met with Mike and Kelly, at one point, Kelly said, what do we bring back to the School Committee on Thursday night? And we said this, so I'm assuming you all got it, and then reviewing it, because it's the numbers that we're looking at. And just by way of context, that we saw that there's not a one-year answer to this problem. It's a multi-year problem. And the biggest concern that we should all have is how, no matter what the fix is this year, how sustainable is it next year and the year after? So one of the things that, who put Bonnie on the spot to address was, even at this early stage, if we went with the plan that she's put on the table for our consideration for fiscal 2015, and the number is an appropriation of $16.7, what's the starting point for the following year's appropriation of the schools? And the number from that, which I hope is carried forward to you, is $17.2. So that, and I think it gets to the question that I heard from Darrell earlier, that how do you, no matter what you do this year, how do you sustain it all year? So I think that that really needs to be an important part of the discussion, that, because if, let's say, $16.7 or something close to it did it for fiscal 2015. If we need to have it be $17.2 for fiscal 2016, then we ought to know that right now. We ought to, we ought to be committed to that jointly, so that we're all building our financial plans on a sustainable model for the future. So that was some of the number crunching that was done here. What if you zeroed out the use of the reserve, of the School Choice Funds, for example, for 2015, and held them over for 2016? That could be part of the strategy. But if you've gotta spend more than you otherwise would for the circuit breakers because you must, then how do we make sure that there's enough total between the town meeting appropriation, school reserves, the School Choice that has been built up, and an average year circuit breaker? Do those three get you the, you know, sort of the spending level that you need for the sustaining program? I guess those are the sorts of issues that are on--
Is $19.7 the number that you all need?
No, $16.7.
Excuse me, $16. Yeah. She apologized, folks.
That's right.
And it's not, it's not a need, it's just the number that we've been going with, you know? $16.7 make it work, but as Mike said-- Almost. --as far as School Choice, you can't take the $200,000 and say, don't spend the School Choice, because that's necessary for the system. And as I say, $250,000 is the total number, and using that $250,000 out of School Choice is required to run the system.
Just so I can get them written down, because I'm writing on this there. Could you give me the numbers that you're talking about there? I got the $16.7, but what are you talking about for revolving fund usage? Just so that--
It would be $750, you know?
$750 for revolving funds.
And that gets us to the $17.45.
All right.
So--
$250.
Right. So just for my clarification, because I hear what you're saying, but I'm missing it in the math here on it. They're proposing that we use $750,000 out of our revolving funds.
Specifically out of--
Let me simplify it by a little bit first, by saying unspecified.
Okay, that's right.
Right? And then we have two ways of filling that need. $750,000 out of Circuit Breaker, $750,000 out of School Choice, or some combination thereof. So what I'm missing here is, and maybe you need to clarify what your concern is a little bit for me, is if I use $750,000 and I still get to the $17.45, I guess it doesn't matter to me yet where I pulled it from unless I've lost flexibility in which program I can fund.
Right. What we're missing is the $17.45 is, originally, the way we specified it was $16.95, right, out of, as an appropriation, and $500 out of Circuit Breaker. That's where we were two weeks ago, okay? But what we also had, that we don't talk about when we do the budget presentation, is we had $250,000 of School Choice built in. It's an offset. Like, we don't, we don't put into the presentation how much of our lunch fees that we get every year offsets the food service budget. We don't talk about how much of athletic fees we take in offsets how much we spend on, you know, scholastic athletics. We don't talk about how much we take in in bus fees, how much that offsets. All those things happen, but in terms of presenting the budget for town meeting, which is about getting the appropriation, we don't show that. And one of those things that we don't show as an offset is our annual usage of that around $250,000 of School Choice Funds. It's a flat number, it's built in there, it's been built in there for a decade, and that's just what we do. So the $17.45 is just what we were projecting to use in terms of the appropriation and Circuit Breaker. If we want to go up to using $700,000 or seven-plus of Circuit Breaker, we can talk about that, but it can't be at the expense of using Choice, because then it's a net zero impact on us, okay? And actually, it's a mine-- And actually, it's a minus on us in terms of how we're going to provide services and staff for our budget this year.
So, this line on the chart that I'm looking at should really say circuit breaker fund use. And then separately, we have a line that's not on here called school choice.
Just as we have a line, a line for, you know, bus fees and a line for, you know, we have plenty of other lines we could put on there that, but the difference is, is that the school choice, we have flexibility in terms of, A, we can build up the balance, B, we can use it on whatever we want. Transportation, bus fees, you have to use on transportation.
Yep.
You know, so we have more flexibility in that. That's why we talk about it more often than we talk about the other ones in total. But the thing to understand as part of this discussion is, is that there is an offset built in. And if we move it out, we have to be able to replace it with something, otherwise we're not spending as much money as we were going to, and we're not going to be able to meet our service level.
Okay. Is that amenable to you?
I didn't hear a proposal, I just heard some summary.
As far as understanding that 250,000 out of school choice and how we use it, and why saying "don't spend that" causes a further deficit. Did Mike's explanation resonate?
Yeah.
Okay, super. So, it seems that really it is a simple math issue at this point. 16.7 is what you're saying you'd like the school appropriation to be. Is that, and not, and no change to the way we want to use school choice? Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the, you're back to an important, the important point, and at least as we enter the day. I hurt my foot, so I can't get up. The, I think we entered this morning in a position after, I would argue, the two best weeks of working together over numbers we've had, in my memory of cooperative work between the three boards, within sight of closing a deal tonight. Maybe we can cap that off. And it's all just based on, I think, having the same sense about numbers. The surprise, I think, to the Finance Committee and to the selectmen, from what I'm hearing, is the discrepancy of the 160,000 in the request assumption. The number that's been used in all scenarios over the past couple of weeks, you know, has been that 16,700,000 figure. So, it stipulated that there was an earlier, you know, request from the School Committee, the voted request that you guys made that was higher than that, but, you know, we've been operating on an assumption of lower. The real trouble seemed to be solving the handling of the various revolving funds, the circuit breaker, and the choice. And I'm a little uncomfortable to nod my head that, yeah, I get it all on what was just discussed in terms of that. I think it was properly, you know, a meeting amongst the staff and board members on Monday that kind of hashed through that stuff in detail. So, I would, I would want the same sort of folks to kick that around again, too. But if there's common ground here on that, and it's just a matter of agreeing, and it's not changing the, you know, the bottom line numbers, then, then fine. And if it's, you know, essentially stable going forward, that's good, too. I wish you were there to hear it a week ago, but I got up and spoke on behalf of the school the past couple of meetings, specific to the issue of the revolving funds, because I think, you know, this does reflect a bit of a change in philosophy on the town's part about how to handle it, entirely driven by state policy. And I think you guys properly defended, you know, your historic use on it, because it wasn't too many years ago when the rest of us were beating you over the head to, you know, be cautious with those funds. So, I think that's all appropriate and good. So, if, you know, if we can get agreement on the appropriation number on the town side, and again, that only reflects, you know, a part, a large part, but not the whole part of the school spending, but that's the part that we're involved in. If we can get an agreement on that and then, you know, codify whatever was just discussed in terms of the disposition of the two funds, I don't know how, I couldn't discern from what was just said, how that's different from what was discussed on Monday or not. I know Mike was there, I know Kelly was there, and Keith, I think, was there. But, you know, if there's common ground on those two points, then, then what we're left with is a, on paper, $200,000 or so operating deficit, at least in Bonnie's projections, and she's very cautious about that. She's also bullish that she thinks at least 100,000 of that may be captured before town meeting in, you know, in estimates on some revenue, at least that she said verbally, and she's wise not to put it in writing yet, so that half of that may be gone before town meeting, and the other half, unless we come up with a better option, we would handle, you know, prospectively, a lot like we did last year's. And that's, since some anticipated cherry sheet numbers could make that number disappear, that would be the, you know, the baseline for an agreement. So, that's my takeaway of what we've heard so far.
I would offer the, primarily, the fundamental difference between Monday morning's discussion and this evening is the school choice piece of this. And I think we're all coming to the same understanding as how we intend to use the school choice and think it's the best way. And then, what I'd like to do at this moment here is I'm going to poll the board, it's not a vote at the moment, but see if we're getting head nods on the 19th, excuse me, 16.7, I keep trying, guys. 16.7 billion instead of the 16.950 that we had originally going forward. So, Darryl, your thoughts?
So, I continue to do my math on my sheets here, and I think I understand now where Mike is coming from on this here. So, if I, if I net the 250 in that we're currently using it, we have an expected expenditure of 17.7.
Correct.
On it there.
Yeah, but we carefully, so we put it that way, because now we'd add the food budget in there, we'd add the buses. And now, what are we spending on those becomes added, because it's the revolving fund, it's not in the budget quite that way, Darryl. That's the difference. So, because the school choice money is coming in because we're having children choice in, and we're using that to cover the costs associated with the additional students that are in the town.
I guess where I'm going with this is, my original assumption was, when it was first explained, was that we would be using 250, instead of using 250 out of that, we'd make it 750 to make it to 17.4. But as I do the rest of the math here, if I do the 750 with the town appropriation of 16.7, I still need to use 250,000 out of school choice.
Of something.
Right, there. So, that, I guess that's where you're asking, where does that, you know, we didn't net, we didn't net zero out of that, we're still 250, you know, because, because the appropriation went down the same amount that we shifted in there, it doesn't make it up in the circuit, out of the other piece there. I got the math now that does that, so I now understand your concern, and I guess I share it a little bit because I guess, I don't have a sheet here now that shows the 16 piece here, that I can be comfortable to work through that same set of math here on it. So, I guess I'm not comfortable making a final decision tonight on this because, you know, it's a lot to work through in real time here.
The difference we're looking at from what we voted is another 250,000 out of circuit breaker. That's the change. We had said 500, we went back to 590, and now we're talking 750.
And the thing to keep in mind about the use of circuit breaker is that if we don't earmark it to be used in terms of the operating budget, it will get used, it has to get used. So, that 250,000, if we don't end up spending it, and there's a couple of different ways that we could spend it, basically there's three. We could earmark it, and the admin team would take it and say, "Okay, that's part of the budget, so we're going to earmark how we're going to spend that money as part of the operating budget for FY15." If we didn't do that, then it would be held in reserve, and then if we had unexpected expenditures, kids moving into the district that require services, change in services of kids that are already in the district, change in rates being charged, whatever it is, then rather than going back to the town and asking for an additional appropriation because we have to spend more, we would spend it out of that reserve that we were holding back. If that didn't happen, or it didn't happen to the extent where we exhausted the amount that we need to spend out of circuit breaker this year, then the next strategy would be to contemplate prepaying for FY16. And what we're, basically what we're talking about is, is that if we do earmark it, that still leaves us a significant amount to hold in reserve so that we can meet unexpected expenditures. We're not limiting or removing all of our flexibility in that regard. And if we are, if we do well next year, and we don't have a significant amount of unexpected expenditures, then we would have a significant amount that we could use to prepay for FY16, which would go a long way towards alleviating some of the concerns we have of that particular budget year. And in looking at the numbers, you know, we are, the only, all we're going to have next year at the beginning of the budgeting exercise is 645,000 in circuit breaker. We know that, because it has to happen. We have to expend the rest of it prior to that. It's just a question of how we do it.
I have two comments here. Firstly, one change that's been coming on through the state is Case Collaborative, our collaborative, has traditionally billed us for students, for new student expenditures the following year. The state is saying we can no longer do that, which is all well and good, but it emphasizes the importance of having a healthy revolving fund through the, through the circuit breaker. So, I'm concerned that if we get that number down too low tied in with these, with these expenses that we will now be paying in the calendar, in the same calendar year that they occur, we're given a lot less time to sort of figure out how we're going to handle it. Previously, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, but previously, we've been able to see, say, "Oh, okay, so it's FY13, we have a student who needs more services, this is what it's going to cost and how it's going to affect our budget." We don't pay for that until FY14, which gives us a little room to say, "All right, how are we going to handle this?" Going forward, that's not going to be the case. We're going to have, it's going to be the student in FY15 who will need more services, and we're going to say, "Okay, we need to make this work within our current budget." And that's a new challenge that I think we are able to handle, but it certainly emphasizes the importance of keeping that circuit breaker fund healthy. The other point I would add is that, once we find a solution for this year, we do need to be cognizant of the following year's appropriation. So, if the appropriation is lower this year than what we voted on, and we're still able to spend the money we need, that's okay, provided that following year, when we come in with an even larger ask for an appropriation, from a town appropriation, which will seem larger, because this year's appropriation will be lower, we need to make sure that there's not going to be a huge fuss over that because, you know, it's important and it's necessary funding. You know, you'll look at our schools, and we're not adding loads of staff, we're trying to stay afloat here, we're trying to make sure we don't have to make cuts. And I think this year, we're in a pretty good position, but it's next year and the year after that I'm pretty concerned about.
So, can I follow up with a couple of questions? I just out of curiosity.
Sure.
All right. So, catching up on my calculator here and stuff, well, I mean, it's important to work through these here. So, I was comfortable during one of the, our last meeting there, when we talked about one of the options, which was only looking for a 2.5% increase. I understand now, I think I get where the math is going to go with the 16.7 number on it, and then where the 17.2 from next year comes, which I think addresses what my original concern was, which is, are we on the right path there? And, you know, I guess I take everybody at their commitment that that's the path we'll stay on, because I think that's the whole purpose of working together on all of this here. So, I understand the pieces there, and I think if I read these numbers right, we still, with the 750, we still have 282 left for contingencies for circuit break, for circuit breaker.
There would be, yep. 283, 558.
There, so, and then, would we have options to, I guess, going forward as we go through 15, could we determine exactly which parts we take out of circuit breaker versus school choice as we spend through, through the revolving, the use of the revolving funds that are active at that point?
We'd have that option as a committee, absolutely. Certainly won't look at this as a risk mitigation strategy, is just doing that public math, just said 1,330,000, take the 750 out of it, it leaves 283 and some change. And that 283, we keep in reserve, and at some point we look at, and we prepay it to 16 a little bit. Is it the middle of 15 that we make that decision? Opportune numbers are points right now. Do we wait until the third quarter of 15 before we pay down anything so that we would keep that? But at some point, if we have, let's just say towards the end of FY15, and all that 283 was available still, then I certainly would recommend that we jump through all of that into a prepayment for FY16 at that point. So, I think to your point is to, would we rather take some amount of school choice at a particular time, or the circuit breaker? That'd be an internal discussion.
Well, we could manage how much we keep in reserve. We have 280,000, just rough math here, that we can use to manage how much we use out of revolving, out of school choice versus prepay. Depending, like, if we have unexpected things and we have to draw more on school choice, we could actually look at how we could balance all of the, all of the things and maybe use part of that money to reoffset it.
Conceivably, hypothetically, we could, if we had to expend all of the 283 because of unforeseen circumstance, that doesn't mean we couldn't prepay.
Right.
We just have to use school choice money because all of our, all of our circuit breaker would be gone. So, if it was still the right strategy to do that, and we felt comfortable expending school choice down, we could do it. We have that flexibility. We're not losing anything by virtue of spending the circuit breaker earlier and not being, having available prepaid. Other than, okay, well, yeah, we expended it and we prepaid, well, now we're out 500 something thousand dollars instead of being out 283, but, you know, that's what we've got to do, it's what we've got to do.
I'm getting comfortable with what's being talked about here, and I just have one other comment relative to, and again, we don't have crystal balls for predicting the future here, but right now, we are netting students in under school choice here, so that's contributed very positively to this balance here. We have 144 apartments and 56 new homes coming online in the next two years. In order to meet the goals of keeping the population constant, we would have to do that at the expense of school choice slots.
Yes.
Which will be less money coming in for that part of reserve.
You bring up a great point, and we did talk about this on Monday. But think about this for a second, okay? If, and it's possible that we might end up either right at the same number of kids we have in the district, albeit with fewer school choice kids, okay? But it's also possible that if we have to add staff to handle the influx of in-town students, that we, you know, we might, you might have 15 third graders, so you need another classroom because we're maxed out. But that means you've only got 15 in a room, you've got room. We could conceivably open more choice, and it might be the right thing to do for a variety of reasons.
I only use the population staying constant for, just for the simplistic part of, if our population stayed constant, there's probably an expectation we'd hold our staff.
Yes, exactly. And it is entirely possible, it is not even possible, it's, in that scenario, yes, our school of choice inflow money would go down over some period of time.
I mean, I guess that's part of the discussion in terms of, of the long-term risks of where the budget numbers are, because if we become dependent on that school choice will be our buffer, we have a risk of not getting school choice funds in the future.
And so, we will keep a very close eye on as we go through that analysis.
All right, thank you. Yeah, no, I just, like I said, there's a lot of subtle points in this that I wanted to make sure that was brought out.
My point is not really relevant, it would have gotten us off on a tangent, so I, you know, there's nothing like going on anyway.
Take that guy's hand.
Hey, you're some kind, I came without, all by myself, come on. So, if I, you know, I know there's staff here, I know Chuck has to say, but I know staff's in the back, too, would like someone to say, so if I could pass my time to him, I'd like to hear from Steve Anoudi, but if Chuck wants to go, either way, whatever the chair, whatever the chair wishes.
Where's Steve hiding? I didn't see him.
He's in the back.
Is he?
He's still jumping, Jack's in the back. Paul, can you give him?
You got it.
I know. I'm sorry I walked in a little bit later, I missed the first part of the discussion, but I'm hearing some of the numbers that are going on. I just want to emphasize the point that school choice is now your reserves. Because of, because of the emphasis from the state now in having to spend the circuit breaker money, we need to look at school choice as our reserves. And you know the importance of reserves, I know the importance of reserves. And I'm hearing something a little different than I walked away with on Monday from the meeting. One of the things that Mike talked about was, the original 500,000 was split 250 and 250 between choice and circuit breaker.
In previous years, but not, not.
In the budget that we had, in your original budget, your original request of 500,000, you were told it was 250, 250. And the reason Bonnie put the extra money into what her appropriation was, was to say... And the reason Bonnie put the extra money into what her appropriation was, was to say, don't, try not to spend your choice money, because it's going to be your reserves, and up the circuit breaker money, because we're going to have to spend that million dollars, one way or the other.
It was.
Whether we're going to prepay some for next year, or supplement everything that we're going to do out of school choice.
It's not 250, 250 though, Steve, it's 250 and 500 from the original. 500 was circuit breaker and was split between equipment, maintenance facilities, and salaries, is how we split that in the presentation. The 250 is that separate piece that we say, because the revolving fund doesn't reflect in the numbers on the board there. Just like the school bus revolving fund, or bus revolving fund, athletic funds, don't reflect on the board, because that's money in, money out. So I would say that it's not 250, 250, it was 250 of, school choice is being spent, that's over here if you will. And then what we presented in the budget was 500,000, and we split that, 250 in salary, and it's a, say 250 in the other.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I, I just want to emphasize some of the things that Darryl's trying to get to, is that it's important how you handle that choice money moving forward.
True.
And if there's a way that you can hold on to it, even this year's, FY14's choice money, you're going to have to spend a little bit more in circuit breaker money than you originally planned to. If you can supplement that money, save the choice money from this year, that adds to the pot for the following year.
And that, that's a great point. And one thing to keep in mind too, is, is that there have been years where we've earmarked 250, and we've only done 220 or 200, because as the year goes on, you know, maybe we get retirement savings, or, you know, there are other things that can happen, and they've been charged, and we had a very explicit discussion about it on Monday after we left you guys, is, even though that's, you know, basically that's a cap, you know, we don't expect you to spend any more than 250 unless you come back to us and explain why, and we, you know, have a robust discussion about that. But even beyond that, if you can spend less, then spend less, and build that reserve up, that's always been a way we've looked at it, but your point is right, because of the, the different way we have to handle circuit breaker now, which we have been accumulating over time, and we can't anymore, that'll be flat, plus or minus, you know, it could go up, if it goes up, it's only because we're spending more. And if it goes down, it's because we're either spending less, or we're getting reimbursed for less, which has happened. So, you know, we have to be careful about that. So, and, and we've talked about what's the right number of reserves to hold, and if, if the right number is, in the past, it was 500, then it kind of got to 750, we're all comfortable with that, and we've actually been over that for several years. I don't, I'm not comfortable with really being over a million, I would say at that point, we should start spending it, because, you know, it's money for the kids. Having a two or, two or three million dollar reserve seems kind of, you know, cutting off your nose to spite your face sort of thing. But if 750 and a million is the right number, then fine, and, you know, we've always worked towards that with the FinCom and the Board of Selectment. It would only be in the most extreme and duress circumstances that we would fly in the face of that. Hopefully, we, we came close a couple times, hopefully we're going to get past that.
But you have the chance from this year, because there's about 200,000 extra in circuit breaker money that needs to be spent for what you have budget.
Yeah, that's true, but looking out, and Darryl talked about this, and Keith Bergen alluded to it too, in terms of thinking about FY16, there is, there are scenarios that we've started to model, where having that circuit breaker to pay, prepay, while it's certainly not a viable ongoing strategy, if we can massage that out over one or more year, that could be meaning, could be very meaningful in a very difficult budget year. So, I see your point you're making, but there are alternatives too, that it still would be beneficial to, to contemplate that kind of thing.
The opposite viewpoint, instead of the prepayment, is to, because you can always spend that within, you spend $6 million a year in, in special education costs, somewhere between five and six million. Just to cover a million dollars of it in one year is really not hard to do, so.
Well, we could do it. Your answer is we could do it.
Absolutely. And all that is, is shifting which pocket you're taking the money from. So if you can, if you bring it all in and cover your special education costs, and save that, that school choice money, able to compound it and bring it into the following year, you can always use that as the cushion also for the following year. And it gives you the flexibility. Just, I'm keep the thing.
Mike, something you alluded to, but I wanted to, to state this more openly, is that we are at a circuit breaker reimbursement high right now. It's, I don't think anyone's really expecting it to go north of where it is now in terms of the percentage reimbursement we get from the state. Whether we will get more back because of increased services, increased expenses on our end, that might, might be the case, but that's still a net loss in terms of, in terms of our budget. So, it, and not only will it not go higher, but it could very well get lower as the state starts to hopefully try to fund some other priorities as well. And what we've seen over the past couple of years is they've sort of neglected some, some funds at the expense of others, and, and they're sort of, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, and that affects all of us, surely when we're looking at local aid. But what it comes down to is our circuit breaker reimbursement rate is at an all-time high now, or close to an all-time high? It's not going to go much farther up, and it's, you know, not something that we can count on, this funding is healthy again.
Here's where I think we are tonight, folks. It seems 16.7 is a figure that the Board of Selectmen and FinCom would agree to. How we may use the circuit breaker and/or the school choice funds as reserves, if you will, during the fiscal year, I think we can work that at the school committee level. So what I'm going to ask, if we are okay with 16.7, tell the town, so that would take us from the 16.950 to 16.7, if we're okay with that, and our ultimate budget's already made 17.450, it's just that we're using, out of that million dollars, 750,000 instead of originally contemplating 500,000. So, Alex?
My concern again would just be the jumping off point for next year with the town appropriation, so it is early.
Right.
It is early to get an agreement there, but maybe an acknowledgement of that.
We have, we received, we received that on Monday, and Keith mentioned it again earlier tonight. Right now, we would be jumping off at a $500,000 increase in an appropriation for next year. So that, that's understood for now.
And I'll say that again.
Preliminary.
That's a planning number.
Planning number.
Right, as a planning number, we understand things can change based on, you know, the number of housing starts and all the rest of it. For, for purposes of making policy decisions by, by the boards tonight, I, I think that there are two numbers, and you just said them, that are the key ones. First is that it's a 17.45 million dollar budget, spending, that's your spending plan, of which there would be 16.7, supported by a town needing appropriation. And if you go with those numbers, and then you carry them forward, just for planning purposes on the document, I mean, that we're happy to stand behind the budget planning for, on into the next fiscal year, that if you carry those forward, then that would translate to a, an appropriate, a, a budget of, according to Bonnie's numbers, 18.2, supported by, set, supported by an appropriation of 17.2. Just as a framework, I know there's a lot of, a lot of detail to be worked out about how you, what reserves you use to make those happen, but just, but that for fiscal 2016, the 7, the 17.2 million dollar appropriation goes along with an 18.2 billion dollar spending plan.
Yep.
And there's a lot that's in your control with how the reserves are used, whether that, whether that works or not. But moving forward, moving together, these are the, this is the common framework, I think, that we would see.
And I just want to take that out one, one step further for the people that are listening, this isn't new to us, but, you know, you said 7, 18.2 spending, 17.2 appropriation, everybody's like, oh, wait a minute, there's a million dollars missing. But, again, we know we're going to spend circuit breaker, exactly. We know we're going to spend minimally 500 to 600,000, and so really, that half of that gap, or 60% of that gap just went away, and then it's really just the, the rest that's left over, which we can work with school choice and other ways of crafting the budget. So, that's not a terrifying scenario for us, that is a workable, and, and everything being preliminary, we'll start from there and move forward.
But it's vital that in solving this year, and the coming year, we've got to have a plan for what we're going to do this year.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And those numbers that we got on Monday have helped, and I've already been modeling some stuff, and, like I say, I'm not, I'm not like, woe is me, I don't know what we're going to do, I have some great ideas and we'll work them, so.
With that, I'm going to ask for a motion along the lines of, craft it as you wish, but along the lines that we amend the requested appropriation from the town from 16.950 to 16.7. Who would like to make that?
I will make a motion that we request from the town an appropriation of 16.7 million dollars for fiscal year 15 for the school budget.
Any further discussion?
One question, let me just, so, in several of the other conversations that had occurred in the email exchanges and the other pieces there, there was a, one of the counter proposals was about the school psychologist, that's not included in this discussion.
Correct.
Yeah, we're talking about our original submitted budget with no staff augmentation changes on it. Just because there was a variation in the piece there, and I want to make sure we all are talking about the same thing.
Can I just make one comment on that, because you alluded a couple of times to email change and stuff. That is, is town administrators working with the, with the, it's, it's not.
Yeah, not, not.
Not logging about budget via email or, you know, cross.
Violating, getting lost.
Yeah, only, yeah, exactly. Just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no, we haven't had any discussion on it, there was just an email exchange, and those are.
Sharing.
Right.
Sharing there.
Distribution.
On, on that note, would it still be possible within the funds we have available under this agreement to find the money to do the school psychologist in the next fiscal year?
Depends on how our hiring goes at this point in time, and we could, if the school committee gave us approval, dip into school choice funds to fund it.
I think, I think the thing to keep in mind about that is, is that, obviously that's been identified as, as a priority in terms of if we could do more, that was, that would be one of the things near the top of the list that we would try, if not at the top of the list, that we would try to do. And the thing to keep in mind about the budget is, is that even after it's voted, and even after, you know, we put our numbers together based on a lot of assumptions, based on staffing, the amount of services we have to provide, what we're being mandated to do, those things are fluid, and they change over time. And as those things change on the ground, we can make determinations, and it's not even we. We would charge our admin team to make determinations. Now, something as significant as hiring a school psychologist versus doing something else, we would certainly expect them to appraise us of that and get our input on that. But it's entirely possible that we would be coming back to, you know, reevaluate, and it might not be that, it might, that might not be the only thing. Could be other, it could be stuff that Steve comes and says, look, you know, this water boiler broke, what are we going to, you know, this is, we're going to do this and this instead of that to get that fixed. That, that happens every year. It's just part of the process.
Understands. My concern is that when NEAS comes down and says, we need to reevaluate our staffing level at the guidance department of high school, and one of the ways we can augment that to, to sort of lessen the heat there is to add an additional school psychologist. That's our accrediting organization, is NEAS. And when the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed will come out, either this summer or early this fall, with a report that will likely also identify that need, based on their coordinated curriculum review, coordinated program review, excuse me, I'm concerned that we don't want to, and I know everyone here knows this is an important need, my concern is that we don't, that we consider our vote tonight, you know, with that in mind.
We're not easing ourselves out of that. This, going with 19.7, excuse me, 16.7, keep trying.
One of these will get in there one of these times.
What we do tonight on that 19, 16.7. I can amend it again. So, okay? Alright, alright, good, great. Okay, motion made for 16.7, 16.7 million dollars to request from the town for appropriation for Littleton School Department. And it's been seconded. All in favor? I oppose. There's unanimous.
Thank you.
We want to thank you all for coming out tonight, because we know you've got busy lives too, and you've got your own board meetings.
Thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Are you ready, John?
I appreciate it.
I see, thank you.
What I wanted to, what I wanted to do was just make sure that, you know, what I have to know about things.
Folks, I'd almost apologize for swapping the two presentations and this budget, but I hope you saw how important that was. We were going to hear tonight some trailing indicators, and obviously, this was very much a leading discussion as to how we're going to the next year. And having both the Board of Selectment and the FinCom present, frankly, I really do hope you saw the benefit of that. So, apologize that we did delay the 7:10 presentation till 15:00. Hopefully it's going to be exciting, John, as we just had our budget. So, John, go ahead and take it away if you're ready.
Okay, thanks. I'm working on it, John, just a second. Okay. Just have to center it, it will be good.
What Principal Harrington has done, in your package, you have some information that contains a lot of tables, there was some supplementary information that you were also provided with. Principal Harrington's tried to simplify that, so that we're not looking at 40 tables this evening, perhaps four instead.
No graph.
We were going to put your graph up, but we couldn't separate it from how you sent it.
Oh, I could have sent you the spreadsheet, sorry.
We couldn't remove it from the email, I think because you did it on the iPad.
It was actually a picture of the, of the graph.
We couldn't pull it out for some.
Making a visual, you know, visual graph is certainly helpful for, for presentation, but tonight I just created some simple tables this afternoon to help do exactly what Superintendent Clutchy said, which is simplify the data. There's a lot of granular stuff in those detailed reports from DESA. So tonight's brief data presentation is centered on the post-secondary performance and outcomes of students, LHS graduates, who enrolled in public or private post-secondary institutions. So where they went after they graduated. This data comes from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education database, Edwin Analytics, and is based on information from the National Student Clearinghouse. We were all intrigued by where they got this data, because it's, some of it's attracting graduates, you know, who have, you know, been out for seven years. It was pretty impressive to see that the state actually has access to this data and is able to summarize it. The first table, report shows the post-secondary enrollment of LHS graduates from 2007 to 2013. This is based on their enrollment within 16 months after high school, rather than the immediate fall after high school. This accounts for students taking time for study, work gaps, sometimes they finish up over the summer or a month later after graduation. Please note that the specific post-secondary report in your packet is based on enrollment in the immediate fall after high school, and this is 16 months after high school. The data shows a consistent trend for enrollment in two-year and four-year colleges for the past seven years. Our percentage of LHS graduates attending college is consistently in the mid to high 80s, with a median of around 86%. State median is 74% over that time, so we're about 12 points above the state median. And you can just take a look at that and see that, that trend line going across there, and, and the differential between LHS or Littleton and the state. Before I move ahead to the next table, I just sort of, I'll pause at this time and ask if there's any questions about post-secondary enrollment. Do we take chairman, or?
Yeah, please. Speak loudly, though.
Yeah, so this is only addressing where they were 16 months after graduation, right? This doesn't address, like, when you have 2008, those students should have already graduated from college.
No, it's just enrollment.
This is enrollment, where they went, you know, that they actually enrolled in.
So, are you going to present where they ended up?
The specific schools, or the?
No, I'm saying, in 2008, 80% of our students went to post-secondary education. So, those students would have graduated in 2012. Will you give us the number, the percentage that actually graduated?
We're going to get to actually that table.
Right, but I was just asking.
There's degree attainment, that's a different table. Yep. So, Steve, you and mine, we'll just switch it to the next table, which has to do with degree attainment from the, of the LHS class of 2009, 2008, and 2007. I think that's what Danger's asking for.
Are these going to be available in the meeting minutes? Because they weren't in the package that was.
Thanks. Develop developments.
So are we ready? Need the grade attainment piece, Steve?
The one? No, it's first or secondary persistence.
Did I do the wrong one?
That's it.
The next table report, when it comes up, will show the first degree, and they, the Department of Ed or Elementary and Secondary Education uses the term first degree to describe both two-year and four-year degrees, so typical college undergraduate degree. Obtainment of LHS graduating classes in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and two thousand nine. And just to start with the class of two thousand nine, about fifty-three percent of graduates who left LHS almost five years ago in two thousand nine have obtained their first degree, obtained their undergraduate degree, based on the data we were looking at in the, in the warehouse. This is above the forty-seven percent state average of Massachusetts public high school graduates who have obtained their degrees since two thousand nine. That, just to note, that year in two thousand nine, for their class, sixty-six percent of LHS students attended four-year colleges and twenty-eight percent attended two-year colleges. I remember reporting out to you the year after that and, and talking about how we thought that the percentage going on to four-year colleges was down in two thousand nine. No doubt, though, some members of the class of two thousand nine, perhaps as we meet here tonight, are still working on their degree, which is consistent with college completion data for the nation. More and more reports are coming out about the, the high number of students who do not complete college within the four-year timeframe. And we're indicative, our data is indicative of that. I was talking to the superintendent this afternoon about that. He was talking, and he shared that he had read a recent report in the last month about that that was widely publicized.
Class, John, class two thousand nine.
Yep.
They're still in their fourth year, so to speak, because it's not June yet.
They would have graduated June of last year if they had a four-year degree.
That's it, that's why they're still into it.
So.
No, no, no.
Allow me one second. You only have a four-year statistic on that cohort. You don't have a five-year statistic on that cohort.
You should have six years interested, right?
Not until this June.
Yes.
Right.
So we'll get to the class of two thousand eight, the high school graduating class of two thousand eight. Okay? Going back almost six years to the class of two thousand eight, we see more degree attainment with sixty-six percent of LHS graduates earning degrees. The percentage of Mass public high school graduates in two thousand eight earning degrees stands at fifty-seven percent, so we're significantly higher there. And two thousand eight, just to note, sixty-seven percent, this is not in the table, but just to share with you, about sixty-seven percent of our LHS graduates attended a four-year college and thirty-two percent attended a two-year college. So we're seeing, you know, that difference there.
Previous years, as I recall, and going back maybe a decade or so, the five-year graduation rate was the big number, and now it seems a lot of the data is talking about the six-year graduation rate.
Very true.
And based on that, eighty-two percent of our two thousand seven class had the six-year graduation rate of eighty-two percent, right, obtaining their first degree.
Yeah.
Is that my journey directly?
We're talking about college here, not, are you talking about the high school graduation rate?
The class of two thousand seven.
Yep.
Has attained their degree.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-two percent of them within the six-year.
Eighty-two percent of the kids that went to post-secondary education.
Right, of the ones who went on.
Right.
So, so going back further, almost seven years, back to the class of two thousand seven, hopefully I'm lining these up right. We see that almost eighty-two percent of LHS graduates have obtained their degrees. The percentage of Mass public high school graduates in two thousand seven earning degrees is currently sixty-two percent. And when it comes to obtaining their degree, the LHS class of two thousand seven stands twenty percentage points above the state average. So the trend is that as the years go by, more graduates are obtaining their degrees. I think that's the thing that's noticeable and worth highlighting, which is.
Well, we, think about that for a second. So each year that goes by, kids in Littleton keep plugging along.
Yes.
Whereas at a lot of other places, they just stop.
Perhaps, yeah.
They fall off, because we, we're outstripping the, the average by a greater degree year by year.
Yeah.
It's an interesting thing to think about.
It is, and that.
Just because you didn't get done in four years, you don't get discouraged. What you've got at Littleton is, you, you know it's good enough, you're just taking your time, whereas other people might just say, I can't do this, I'm not prepared. I wasn't prepared well enough by my high school or whatever other factors you want to use.
It could be a financial reason.
Yeah, it could be financial. It's interesting to think about.
The percentage of students that take six years for a four-year degree has increased tremendously in the last ten years. That's trended throughout North America, not just the United States.
That was a fairly strong cohort in two thousand seven in comparison. Eighty-eight percent of that class of two thousand seven attended four-year colleges and twelve percent roughly attended two-year colleges. So, you know, that, that observation that you just made, Mike, it lines up with the persistence data that we're going to see, which is a new report from the DESE that I just learned about today. So we'll turn over to that. Post-secondary persistence of LHS graduates, first to second year persistence. And if you wouldn't mind, Steve, bringing that up, I'll just give you a sec. And we'll finish with this, this table tonight.
Could I just ask a clarification question?
Okay.
So when you put your first chart up, we're averaging, I think it was eighty-six percent of our students go on to college?
That's right.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
That's right.
That's the outcome.
Okay. So it's not as bad a drop as it seems when we look at two thousand and nine, because that's only four years.
Right.
So we're only losing about five percent.
And also remember, we're looking at small cohorts here.
Well, that.
A one or two kid, you know.
Right, but, but is that eighty-two percent, is that of the kids that went to, is it same same, right?
Yes, right.
So the percentage that, that actually got their degree.
Enrolled.
Is very close to a hundred percent of them that started college actually received a degree.
Five percent.
At some point, is that accurate, what I'm saying?
We don't, definitely don't see it that high as hundred percent.
No, but when you looked at two thousand and seven, what was that percentage then that got their degree? Was that the percentage of those that went to college?
Class of eighty-seven, about eighty-two percent of the LHS graduates obtained their degrees, yeah.
Right, but was that, but then when you looked at the percentage who went to college, is, what is the rate of who went and who actually completed?
Yeah, that's an interesting, specific detail. I'd have to, I wouldn't want to, I'd have to look to make sure that I'm describing it the correct way.
But that's what I, I mean, it, it looked to me like.
The lingo is, is, or from the report that I was looking at and interpreting this afternoon is that eighty-two percent of LHS graduates from the class of two thousand seven, that's the data they used, have obtained their degree. Does that help?
But we don't know that that's the same eighty-seven percent.
Eighty-two.
That enrolled in your first report.
Okay.
In the first sixteen months.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay, yep. That's a good, I'll look at that, I'll look into that.
Because it looked like it was pretty close, which is, which is a good.
These are, these are positive, we, the more I looked at this, the more relieved I was. At first I was concerned about some of the points, but.
It must be, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It must be very accurate, because they, we're amazed that they've been able to trace these students for so long. I mean, this is a, a new data source for us this year, and I'm, I'm really amazed that they have that kind of tracking mechanism, to be honest with you. I mean, that's incredible.
We were wondering about accuracy of it, and so.
Yeah, we're going to do a follow-up phone call to them and ask how they are actually tracking students for that period of time.
Well, let's do this then, because those are some key questions and probably give more fidelity to the data. So why don't we allow you that time to gather that extra data and then give that presentation again? How's that?
Okay, sure. Want, one more table? Or is only one more to show?
No, let's get the fidelity of the data, you know, so that you can answer those questions, and we won't leave people going away with numbers as to, is it eighty percent of eighty percent or is it eighty percent of the original?
That's what I was hearing, too. And I couldn't answer that question.
So let's do that, please.
Truth, you know, I don't know the answer to that right now.
But, I mean, that would be, that would be great to know, because that's one of the things that we've been, in the task force, that's one of the things we've been addressing is, you know, or recognizing is the number of students that don't actually complete their degrees and why, you know, that might be. And if we are seeing our students being able to actually complete their degree regardless of the amount of time, that's a really.
So, I think Paul said it well, is it eighty-two percent of eighty-six percent?
Correct.
Or is it eighty-two percent of a hundred percent of the graduates?
Correct.
Right, so, and I have to check that detail.
Right, right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Food service, financial update.
So you had in your packet, you give me a second, I'll pull it up.
Okay, while you're doing that, let's do the approval for nature's classroom.
Principal Branko. Nature's classroom, that is you. I gotta keep going, I gotta get that checked. Pull up.
I had just spun. Good evening. I am back for our annual request for approval. The sixth grade team has asked me to come forward tonight and request once again that you give permission to the sixth grade team to take the children on the overnight trip to nature's classroom at Groton Wood Camp, and the plan is to go the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-third. Nature's classroom is an important part of the sixth grade science curriculum administered in an authentic way. Our students participate in field groups exploring the natural environment and its inhabitants, and classes that cover a wide variety of physics, chemistry, and biology topics. All students will get to participate in nature's classroom community of caring and responsibility as well. I've attended this trip every year for the past three years that I've been here. It's a very cool opportunity for the kids to apply their science skills authentically to also learn some interesting community and life skills that they might not get within the four walls of the schoolhouse. So I would respectfully ask that you support our opportunity to do this. It has been attended by former sixth grade students for the past six years, and it has been considered by many to be a highlight of the curriculum, and we respectfully request your approval tonight.
Any questions, Principal?
I have comments.
Comment, oh.
Mark, you and I have discussed this, kind of off the cuff, but I would just ask, I know I've gotten a lot of feedback on nature's classroom, the change from a couple of days or two nights.
From three to five.
Three days.
From three to five.
Correct, from three days to five days.
Right.
So the four nights day for sixth graders, albeit a few miles down the road.
Right.
But the fact that it is only a few miles down the road, there's a lot of kids that feel that, that security and.
Mm-hmm.
I would just ask that lots of communication with the parents, setting expectations, and we discussed doing another survey and finding out, getting feedback.
Yeah.
Because I've gotten a lot of it myself, I've shared much of it with you, and I just, if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to try to get as much feedback as we can moving forward, whether it's more beneficial to have the five-day program or slip back to a three-day program or somewhere in between.
Right.
I know that they, they sold you hard, the, the company that does it sold you hard on the five-day program and to get the best benefit, and I get that, but I think we hit diminishing returns somewhere around Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so again, I can't speak to the qualitative data of the, about the diminishing returns, quite honestly, but I can speak to is how we collected the data the first time and the second time.
Right.
So the first time when we made this, it was actually my first year here, I think four years ago. So we made the switch after a lot of conversation as a team and after parent input at open forums. We held, I think, two open forums that year for parents. We obviously held open forums for parents of students who were going. We did not collect data from the students who had gone three and asked them if they wanted to do five, which would have been a cool thought, but it's four years later, so, sorry. However, if you also recall, after my second year, we did a pretty comprehensive parent survey with over forty-five questions and had a huge return. I think it was close to fifty percent return or higher, which is statistically way outside the norm in a survey. And there were nature's classroom questions on that, and based on the feedback of over fifty percent of the parent base, we stayed with it. So we are actually creating another parent survey this year. We, we've agreed at our school to do them every two years.
Yep.
And so that's coming out of the school council. We're about eighty percent done with the survey. Parents will get that in late May, first week of June, after most of our programs have taken place, and there will be nature's classroom questions again. So anecdotally, you get feedback, anecdotally I get feedback, and we're going to ask people for it formally like we always do, and so I'll take that into consideration and we'll look at it. The other thing we're talking about is surveying the students who have gone on this trip for the past three or four years, because while parents respectfully, and I am a sixth grade parent, so while respectfully we have our opinions of things, I actually don't go to my child's middle school in Chelmsford, I have a lot of opinions about it, but I'm not there every day. So, thank God, actually, so.
You better not.
And the principal is thankful for that, I'm sure. So with that said, we are talking about ways that we can collect this data from students, not just around nature's classroom, but the school council is talking about moving forward with student surveys in the future in a lot of different areas at the middle school to just get some interesting feedback. We did it with our second step program, if you recall, and it led to a massive overhaul of that program based on student feedback, so.
The only other thing it offers, both for this trip and for the DC trip, if you can have some of the students come in and just give us a briefing.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yep.
I have a question. What's the cost of the families?
Six grade parents here, can you remember? Yes, go ahead, help me.
Ninety-six dollars times five pings. Just about five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring that with me.
Sure, that's mine. That's mine. Hundred bucks a day.
Yeah.
So when we move from a three to a five, we should also sort of consider the cost of the families?
Yeah, we did. That was a huge, we actually built in fundraising that year, and we built in a very substantial scholarship fund, which we still have, nobody's ever been denied on any of the school trips for, for financial purposes. And the other number I will get for you, as I was reflecting on tonight, is, which is an interesting stat, when you talk about who's commenting on this, is the very small percentage of children who do not go. So we also have that in for the DC trip, and this year it was an astoundingly small percentage of students who didn't go on the DC trip. So we look at that every year, and if the data shows that, you know, twenty percent of your families or fifteen percent of your families don't go when they know that it has nothing to do with cash flow because we offer scholarships, that's telling to me, and we have to look at our programs. That has not been the case for the past four years.
I'd like just to add, as a parent of a student who, I had a three-day student and a five-day student, I can tell you anecdotally that my older son would have loved to have gone there for five days, and my younger son, it actually is better. I mean, three days isn't a lot of time to be away, right? So you finally just get them settled, and then they're actually doing something, and then they're coming home. So I, just as a parent of having both, I, I definitely saw the five days as a benefit because you got, got to more of the learning, because they acclimated and then they stayed.
Right.
It's my two cents.
Yeah, and, you know, you, you carefully alluded to the sales pitch. I mean, I want to be careful on camera that, yes, there was a push from the, the organization, but, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at the programs, and factually.
I know you do.
We get two more days of programming, which is important to, to the science teachers at least.
And, and do the students who stay behind, that handful of them, there are.
There's an alternate program in the presence of the school.
And they're still getting their, their needs now.
Yeah, and also, and I'll be careful with confidentiality here, but you can imagine that there are some kids that this is problematic for, for a variety of reasons. We do modify the program for individual students as needed.
Thanks, that's helpful.
but, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at the programs, and factually, we get two more days of programming, which is important to the science teachers at least.
And, and do the students who stay behind, that handful of them, there are...
There's an alternate program in place at the school.
And they're still getting their, their needs now.
Yeah. And also, and I'll be careful with confidentiality here, but you can imagine that there are some kids that this is problematic for, for a variety of reasons. We do modify the program for individual students as needed.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Any others?
Any more comments?
No.
Make a motion to approve the sixth grade class stemming nature's classroom, May 19th through the 23rd.
Motion made second. Allow it. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Enamis.
Thank you, John.
You, Principal Branko. Are you going on the trip?
I am, I'll be there.
How many nights?
I'm not sure yet. My wife says one, and I said two, so we'll see. Everybody knows that that's going to go, right? One, attention.
Can you get the cabin with the hot tub?
Although, if you go for the four evenings, you can give us firsthand anecdotal information.
I could. I did four, I did four evenings in DC, and that was a fun experience.
Okay, food service, ready, Steve?
Yeah, so you had in your packet a summary on the food service operations through the end of February. Through the end of February, we are operating at a deficit, a little over $13,600 at this point in time. It's actually, and I don't have the data with me, it's actually a little bit better than where we were in the prior year, but that still forecasts out through the end of a year of a loss through the end of the year. We're working our ways to mitigate that and to keep that deficit to a minimum, but it does look like we're going to end that program with a deficit again this year. You know, we have worked on some initiatives. We tried a salad bar option at the high school. Maybe John could, you know, address that and see how that went. We're working on finding equipment and getting some equipment so we can also roll that down to the middle school to offer those options to the middle school students as well, as well as working with the wellness committee on some, some other options, menu items and things like that, so. We're trying everything we can.
Those efforts are designed to increase the number of purchases of lunch.
Correct, right. And also to keep, you know, we're trying to keep the cost down as well, but, you know, we're trying to provide more fruits and vegetable, more fresh fruits and vegetables as mandated as well, so it's, it's not easy to, to manage, but, and we're, and we're trying to reach out to other districts as well to see what they're doing and what their best practices are, so we can try to initiate some of that, so.
Prepare meals that the families can buy and bring home. Hey, man. Revenue generating.
One question.
Yes, sir.
So was it last year or earlier during Muffing Gate where the state was telling us what kind of things we can sell there? There was also discussion about the program that would get a six cents a meal more than our current, the previous thing there. What's the stat? Are we, did we, were we able to implement that program to get the six cents or...
Right, so the, the six cents per meal reimbursement is because we are in compliance with the new USDA regulations as far as...
So we are getting that six cents.
We are getting that. It doesn't amount to much. It's probably about $5,000 for the year. It's probably going to be $5,000 to $6,000 total for the year, but it's $5,000 or $6,000 more than we...
So even, I guess that's what I'm saying.
No, no, that's already built into this already.
That's where, I guess where my point was, we got, I was looking for that number, $5,000, and even with that, trying to increase the quality of the meal, we're, we're having to go more in the hole.
Correct.
So there was a more significant impact to the, to the food regulations than even the six cents.
Correct.
Right. Accommodate for.
Correct.
I think that's just important for us to understand.
Okay. Got a question? Yes, ma'am.
Did I ask, stand correctly?
Could you come to the mic so...
I'm sorry, I'm Jackie Brown. Okay, so Jackie Brown, question. Did I understand correctly that you're trying to increase the number of sales of lunch in schools?
Well, we're trying, right, we're trying to encourage the students to eat more lunches and meals at the schools.
Okay. I would suggest, then, that you carefully consider the amount of time allotted to school lunch eating. I've heard from all three of my kids that buying a lunch is, just takes up too much of their time, so, you know, I would look at that factor.
Okay.
That's great input.
It's absolutely very true.
Good input.
Thanks, Jackie. Okay, I have one question. With us at minus 13 right now.
Yes.
We have four months left. Based on previous years and the trends from March, May, June, and previous years, we project...
I'm projecting, right, at probably a deficit of around $20,000.
Any other questions?
Last year, we were at $24,000 deficit.
I think that's, that's the point, is that it's less than it was, less of a deficit than last year, still a significant deficit. So the mitigation efforts that have been made have had some improvement, but not, you know, hasn't gotten rid of it.
What's going on with the vending machine? There is no vending machine used in November or February?
They're gone.
Right, a lot of the vending machines are gone.
Okay.
There's water.
Right, and a lot of that is because the revenue that we were getting from the vendors that supplied those has dried up and shrunk to the point where it's not worth it. And the electricity cost to run those just doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
I think also, based on the food regulations, we couldn't sell anything that was really available in those machines anyway.
Less and less of it.
Nothing was popular there.
Nothing that anybody would buy.
I saw them taking the ice cream one out of the middle school. You should have heard the caterwaul that was going on in there. I wasn't the one crying. I was crying on the inside.
Okie doke, thank you.
Okay.
Superintendent, your report, please.
Start off with Chloe.
Oh, superintendent works, okay. Sorry, so all of the students at the middle school have completed the English MCAS exams. And then this week and next week, students in the sixth and seventh grade, some of them, will be participating in the park pilot. There's a seventh and eighth grade dance this Friday, April 4th, from seven to nine, which is not to be missed, I'm sure. And then there will be the science fair on Thursday, April 10th. And then at Russell Street, there will be the ice cream social and basketball raffle. Basket raffle, yeah, they're rattling off basketballs, excuse me.
Trying to suck up the mic. Put a basketball in a basket, and Mike will be there.
We put a basketball in a basket, sent that to Shaker Lang.
That's April 8th, 6:30. And then there will be the invention convention from 1:15 to 2:30 on April 11th, and that'll be wicked cool, I bet. And then tomorrow, high school is getting our term three grades, which is a big deal.
And...
Close, and a week later, they'll be reported.
Oh, grades close tomorrow, okay, excuse me. Yeah, grades close tomorrow, and then they'll be reported next Friday. And then I think that's pretty much it for the high school right now.
Put a plug, plug in for much of...
There you go. Saw me chomping.
Shakespeare comedy coming up. I have the dates, April 11th at 7:30, April 12th at 2:00, which is no different, and April 13th at 2:00.
At the middle school?
Only one evening performances on Friday. Performances will be at the middle school. A cast of over 23, it looks like. And then the junior class, if I can chime in and add a few things. Junior class hosts a hypnotist at the high school, and hopefully that goes well, if everything's appropriate, all ages are welcome. April 16th at 7 o'clock. Tickets will be sold at the door for $10 apiece. And I also want to put a plug in for, you know, my and Rita, the event you have at high school, I believe, Monday, April 7th. Lucy St. George from the Federation for Children with Special Needs will lead a presentation and a question and answer period. This presentation is Monday, April 7th, like I said, at 7:00 in the Kiva Room at the high school. And one last thing that I always like to plug in April, this time of year, is the Littleton Scholarship Trust's applications are coming due April 15th for parents of seniors and alumni. Please see the important scholarship application on our website, and, you know, we encourage people to apply. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a proposed 2014-15 school committee meeting schedule. Follows a similar, similar sequence to the current year with a few alterations.
It's deconflicted with religious holy days and the like.
We should...
Yep, that's true.
And March Madness, is it deconflicted, March Madness?
Too bad, Mike. You're prepping budget again.
Is it still Thursdays?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Thank goodness for DVRs.
And then parents' conferences, I know, sometimes overlaps this year. We haven't set those for the next school year, school calendar year, because we haven't set those for the calendar year.
We've been working on it. We've been working on it.
Okay, great.
We should have a calendar for you next meeting.
Okay.
If you're happy with the dates that are selected, I would appreciate a motion to approve.
If nobody else has any questions or comments?
Motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar as presented.
Okay, motion made second to approve the school committee calendar as presented by the superintendent. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Enamis, thanks.
And item three, we're working on our annual slideshow of all of our schools. We're actually trying to embed some video this year. I'm not sure whether we're going to continue with it or not, but so far, so good. Just want to make sure that it's not choppy and sequenced, but we wanted to hone up on our technology skills, so to speak. We've had slide shows for three years, and now we're, we're going to try the embedded video. And we're still trying to determine who has the final say in the music that we're going to choose, so I think I'll be more involved this year.
Oh, Dranko, that was a slam.
A little drum solo.
Live band at the end of the year, sip report.
It is getting better every year.
Yeah, you will too. I know you will.
The music's loud enough, we won't hear you.
Come on, small guy with a sneeze.
You know he's going to do it.
At a previous school committee meeting, we had talked about the new fingerprinting law. That law has been actualized about three weeks ago. All the paperwork came through to us as a district. Two weeks before that, they asked for pilot sites, and before you know it, it's in, in place. So all teachers that were hired during the current year will need to be fingerprinted prior to going into next year. Any new staff that we hire from this point on will also need to be fingerprinted. So I wanted to make sure that we are still on the same wavelength from an earlier meeting. The school committee has agreed to pay for that fingerprinting, and I just wanted to know what the limitations were. My takeaway was that we're paying for staff for fingerprinting tests, that's paraprofessional and professional staff. And was that inclusive of coaches as well? Was that your intent as a, as a school?
I think that if they're going, there's the potential for them to be unsupervised with children.
Well, the question is, is the...
You've got to get fingerprinted.
Just a reminder, $35 for paraprofessional staff and $55 for professional staff.
I'm going to chime in if I may, guys. We made a commitment at that to cover the paraprofessionals and the professionals. That's my reflection for sure. We're not happy with the way the state's handling this. We've had that discussion, so that's water under the bridge. But this is not a cost that I want to pass on to our employees. I don't think it's right. So, so that's my two cents, folks.
Can I just get clarification? The school committee is not paying for it. We're just authorizing you to pay for it out of the budget we gave you.
Right.
I don't want you coming back with more money. It's a fingerprint.
Mike, your rate checks out to the little...
Actually, no, I'll be doing the fingerprint thing.
Just write a motion.
We would love to do that.
Do we need a motion, or can we just direction?
I'm okay with direction if you...
Direction, yeah, direction's fine. Just one clarification, so thank you very much.
Do we take a motion for the staff and the parents?
With the coaches.
We agree to do the coaches. Coaches against.
Why don't we put it on the books, then?
Make a motion to authorize the superintendent to pay for fingerprinting of staff, parents, and coaches.
For friendly amendment, any employee that's covered by the law that the school department employs?
Personally, I think staff and parent covers coaches, but, you know, I get why Kelly was asking, just to make sure that he understood us. But I agree with PJ. I think we just leave it at staff.
Provided by law and be fingerprinted.
A lot of talking going on, folks.
Might be easier just to, to make a motion to pay for all LPS employees.
So moved as amended.
Okay, motion made second, all Littleton Public School employees will be paid out of school department funds.
One point of clarification, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we have this down right. Substitute teachers.
Are they employees?
They are. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was on the category. Pardon?
What is Master General Law State?
They would need to be fingerprinted, yeah.
I'm going to pass it on to employees. To follow on the part of the state, that's...
Thank you.
But with the clarification, I'm not objecting to the clarification, but, you know, do we draw substitutes from a constant pool, or...
We do. We do, we...
I know, we're, I think we're being very progressive in making sure that we pay for it. I'm concerned, like, if another district doesn't, and they want the sub here, so that we'll pay for it. I just, we're going to monitor the situation.
We will.
And if there's any concerns about that, you'll be, bring that back to our attention.
Do a day in Littleton, so you can fingerprint it, and then go on the next one. Somebody will do it. You know, don't, don't be wrong.
Okay, motion made second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Enamis, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, interested citizens?
Not interesting citizens.
Except Lisa.
Well, first of all, I'm sorry, but Dr. Harrington stole my thunder about CPAC announcing the, the parents' rights, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
What's the date, Lisa?
April 7th. April 7th, Monday, April 7th, nine, uh, 7 to 9 at the Kiva Room at the high school, so, yes, thank you, thank you. The parents' rights, it's a, for special education, parents' rights workshop. Okay, thank you. Yes, we, we, the CPAC is a member through, and through the generous help of, of the school, a member of the Mass PAC, which we have a basic rights membership. And we actually get the federation to come and give the parents' rights workshop if we organize with another local CPAC that has a basic right, a basic membership. And we've done that with Ayr and Shirley, and in the past, also Lunenburg, we've done, and, and Groton in the past. So we try to organize with other CPACs in order to hold this. And this is, this year, we're doing it in Littleton. In past years, we've done it in Ayr, and we've done it in Groton. So, you know, that's just something to be aware of. So, so that's why we get the federation to come out and actually do the workshop for us. So, and it is a required, mandated thing that we have to have every year so that parents are fully informed about their rights when it comes to special education. So that wasn't really, I, I actually have a question about the wellness committee. Is it, how is it organized, and what is the scope of what they, they do? Can anybody help me with this?
I was going to say, a good start with is, is, I did the policy on that last year, and it outlined their responsibilities really clearly. They meet once a month. They just met last Wednesday. So I suspect that their next meeting is, is the first Wednesday, I think it's the first Wednesday of the month there.
And, and is it something that we, you know, we can, you know, either, is it something that we can be aware of what's happening at the meetings, and, and maybe if we had any requests or suggestions that they might discuss?
Well, it's an open meeting that they post, so I guess people just might not be tracking it there.
Do we post them?
Should be posted. I thought they posted their meeting.
I'd have to go look there.
I thought they advertised it.
I don't follow the posting schedule that closely.
We do have them report annually to the school committee. So they do a formal report to the school committee. If you're, if you're interested, I can certainly give you the email of the co-chairs.
Right, yeah, we, you know, we've been talking, discussing a lot from parents who, who we've been supporting through CPAC about behavioral and mental health questions, and we weren't sure if the wellness committee was a committee that might address some of that, or want to be aware of some of the information that we're getting from parents or, or questions and requests. So I just didn't know what the scope of that committee was.
So far, they're, they've been focusing on foods, helping us with food services, and they've helped institute a middle school wellness day.
Right.
And those are, they're big initiatives to this point.
Right, and that was a great initiative. I did go to that, and it did address things like mental health and organization skills and all kinds of things about, that addressed anxiety that can happen in students. And so that's why we weren't sure if, you know, there were, it had more to do with that as well, you know, if they might address more things.
And I know they're always looking for new members.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Lisa.
Plenty of time. You should be doing that. Quick question. Does anybody, was there a report given from the banned boosters about how we did on the mattress sale?
Forty-three mattresses, $3,400. It's excellent.
Thank you.
It's great. Awesome, because it was different. It was unique. It was great.
It was very unusual to me.
Anyone else? Okay, PBMC Subcommittee, PMBC, excuse me.
Nothing.
Okay, Budget Subcommittee. Well, we talked a lot about the budget this evening, but we did have a discussion, the meeting is so back, as to what information should put on the website when it comes to budget materials, the level of fidelity. Alex, you had a question on that. Have you spoken with Steve or the superintendent since?
I believe we were going to discuss it.
Yeah, you spoke with anybody else besides?
No.
So who wants to lead off on that? You had the question, so.
I can preface the discussion. Couple of weeks ago, I believe it was March 13th, when we were discussing our budget and doing our budget hearing, I had recommended that we post our school budget online. It is a public document and is available to citizens. If they were to email either Kelly or Steve and ask for it, but I thought it would be a good idea to put it online. There were some concerns expressed about the budget being subject to change, and about citizens understanding what's in front of them, both of which I think can be easily addressed by somebody putting "subject to change," and, you know, I think that our citizenry is wise enough to see if they, to know that if they see something that's in the budget that isn't understood by them, that they can just simply call and ask, or email and ask. So that's sort of where I'm coming from. And my, my reason for this is not because I think there's anything glaring in the budget that, you know, people need to know about. What I think the budget.
I'm sorry, can I pause just one second?
Sure.
Can you clarify by what you mean putting the budget on, because we put budget material up there. So it's not as if there's an absence of it. So you're asking for something different than what we do. Could you just be a little more specific about what?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
What I'm asking for is that we put more information than what we put up in the budget presentations every year, which is sort of summary information that's helpful in guiding our budget discussions, but doesn't offer as much insight into how the, into how the money is actually spent and what programs are actually going to. Because when you look at the budget presentation that we give every year, which is online, both part of the agenda and packets, and also later posted on the website, we'll see about maybe 15, 20, 20 line items, give or take. And that will usually include two line items for each school, salary and expenses. What we will also see is we'll also see some of the transportation costs, some of the specialized costs, and maybe three or four line items at most each. And that's helpful for those budget discussions. My concern is that as we've been getting, as we've been working on our budget and changing our budget over the years, we have the ability to show more information and present more information to the public about what's going on in the schools. And I think the budget is a great way to have that discussion. And I think also, as we saw tonight with our, the other boards in town with the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen, I think having that, that present and making sure that everyone in the room, not just those of us who have, you know, emailed Steve or have a copy of it, have access to that and understand that there really is no fat. I think there's, I don't know if anyone in this room, you know, believes that, but I think there are people who might be less involved, who feel that way. And I think that this will, A, reassure them, B, allow the citizenry to understand more about what's going on in their schools, and C, offer greater insight into our budget discussions each year. That's not to say that I don't think that the budget presentation that Mike puts together every year is inadequate for those discussions. I think those serve the purpose, and I wouldn't want to be looking at, what, 1,600 line items during our budget hearing. I don't think that that's productive. But I do think it's productive to put it online. And if we need to wait until once the budget is solidified, I'm totally okay with that. And if we need to put "subject to change" on that, I'm okay with that as well.
I don't think so much that it's just a level of granularity, that we just don't know add to what level of detail you'd like to see. So if it's 1,600 lines that you feel suits the purpose, then we can talk about that and, you know, maybe draw it up.
Well, I think what you're talking about is a line, is a literal.
The line item.
Every account. Every account that's used in the, in the accounting system, you want to put up.
I don't see why not. If there's, and I know that's what Steve can just pull up like that. He already has that. If there's something where we want to say, okay, these accounts we want to put up, these accounts we don't, we can have that discussion. But I don't think that's, I don't know if that, I don't know that that's necessary. If you think that's necessary, I think we can certainly have.
Oh, I think you either put them all up, or you don't put any of them up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put my opinion out in a minute about whether or not we should put all, all of them up.
All is, there's not one person in this room that knows what all means, because it's going to mean something different to each of us. Because you use the word accounts now also, in addition to budget. So we have a budget for an area, and there's going to be different accounts that Steve has in there that he's paying, you know, whether it's for toilet supplies, whether it's paying the water bill, you know, we have a facilities budget line item. So are you advocating that you'd like to see every single bill of material, bill, and that's, because when you say all, I don't know what all means.
I'm referring to the 1,600 line item or so budget that Steve pulls up whenever he looks at this. This is the budget that Mike looks at during the FINC, the, sorry, the budget Subcommittee meetings, and it's, you know.
So the 1,600 lines, give or take, whatever it is, that's what you're advocating?
Yes.
Okay, just so the four of us, and the superintendent and Steve knows what you're advocating.
Sure.
So, you know, get away from the all, lose the all.
I mean, all line items, not all, not all expenditures. That would be.
All right, so, okay, that helps the scope out, thanks. Do you want to leave?
So I've looked, I mean, I've been, not, you know, not as part of the Littleton Budget Subcommittee, but when I was also at Nishoba, you know, I looked at the budget at varying levels of details, and that was actually one of the discussions we had the last year or two here, is, is what's meaningful to the committee, what's meaningful for the other pieces there. I've gone through the, you know, not only the 1,600 line item budget, but the one that includes all the subaccounts there. And I, the problem is, is, you know, after 37 pages, the information is just overwhelming in terms of what kind of conclusions you want to draw out, or if you want to insert below line item. I'm also, on the other side of that, advocate for full disclosure and transparency there. I looked around at what other towns are doing, and it varies from the major function codes within the DEFC, the OR, things there, and then, and then one level deeper, which I think is the 1,600 line piece there. I go, there's a term for the, for the piece there. I want to say, I think it's going to be information overload for folks, but I'm also an advocate of transparency, so I don't have a problem putting it up there. I, I think people can just, it doesn't matter what they delve into, that they'll, they'll circle something and perhaps come to the wrong conclusions, because it's not the whole conference, it's not the discussion that goes in back of a bill there. But at the same time, I see, because we dealt with it there, and I think Nishoba Tech is dealing with it this year, is, you know, there's always the, well, you're not showing it because you're hiding something. And that part of the discussion, I just can't tolerate from folks there, you know. So I'm more, I guess I'm tending towards is, is I'll put it out there, go ahead and look at it, but I'm going to end up just sending it to the superintendent or, you know, to answer questions, because it's a complex set of numbers, as we balance four separate buildings, four separate sets of staffing profiles. You know, we saw in the past how unproductive the discussion was, was when we needed to move a teacher from Shaker Lane to the middle school, for example, and everybody was just up in arms about that, when they weren't really looking at what was happening with our population pieces there. I'm hoping that they listen to the discussion that we have before trying to dive into interpreting the numbers. You can't control that part of it. So I think we might need a balance, perhaps of, when, when is it firmed up enough that it's appropriate to release it for general people to, you know, general digestion of the, of the information? Because we release it too early, it, it's going to change too many times, and it's going to cause the wrong discussions when people come up to us and go, what's going on with this line item? Because really, it needs to be in the context of what we're doing with the overall budget.
And the budget changes throughout the year, but it tends to, if we want to say July 1 or thereabouts, in your opinion, Steve, is there a lot of fluctuation with that budget?
So, no, the budget does not change much throughout the year on a line-by-line basis. We just don't do that many transfers. But if, if I can remind school committee that in that detailed budget that we do, one of the items that school committee wanted to see, and the superintendent wanted to see, was a breakdown for, for instance, departmental salaries, for instance, at the high school and the middle schools. So there is a chance that if a, if a department is a one-employee department, that you would be revealing that salary. Now, yes, that salary is public information, but public information, public salary information requests go through the superintendent, and we'll release that on an as-needed basis, as requested. So there would be the possibility that you would be.
It's also available online through the, through on the town website.
Let's not get into the details of what, how we would do and what we would do until we know what we want to do.
And I guess I just want to say, one other thing is, I also looked at our own town website for the town budget that's available at this, at this point. And there's no information available about the town budget. So, I mean, we're beating ourselves up on, you know, making sure as much information is out there, but the town hasn't released their line item budget for public discussion. So let's not just, I, I, well, no, just keep it to us. There's a point here, though, is, is we need to make sure that we have the material prepped, embedded a little bit before it's released for raw consumption.
I think that we are very transparent. I think that anytime anything is requested, before I became a member of the school committee, I was able to get the information I wanted to get. And there's a better level of understanding. If I'm requesting information as John Q. Public, from Steve or from the superintendent, it's specific. I'm looking at specific line items. I don't need 36 pages or 1,600 line items. And it's, it's pointed, and I think that any one of us can answer a question from any, any one of our constituents, or, you know, from anyone in town. I think each of us got a dozen or 20 emails over tonight's meeting, sharing their opinions because they couldn't be present. And we've gotten requests for things in the past. We've been able to either answer them ourselves, or forward them onto the superintendent and to business manager. I, I personally am not in favor of posting the entire budget, because it can be taken out of context. Without some, some background information and some understanding of the full budget, the big picture, I think we're going to create more problems than we're going to solve.
I think that if there's a specific goal that we're not achieving, that you think is worthwhile, transparency is not a goal. Transparency is more like a policy, like let's be transparent. And I, and I, we can argue about, are we being transparent enough, or what's, you know, what can we be more transparent? But I think that if you have a specific issue that we're not addressing, and you want to bring it up, and we can figure out what's the right way to solve the issue, whether it's more disclosure, or a different type of disclosure, you know, more detail, but not all that detail, I think we can have that discussion, and we may come to some consensus. For instance, you said, well, if we release all 1,600 accounts, you'll be able to see that there's no fat in the budget. I would disagree. I don't think by, by virtual releasing 1,600 line items, you'd be able to make any determination about whether or not there's fat in the budget. If there's fat in the budget, and if, you know, you read the Wall Street Journal enough, there's easy ways to hide fat in the budget and show people exactly what the budget is, and they'll never know that fat's in there. So, you know, if you want to, if you want more analysis and some, of a finer level granularity, because you want to answer a particular question, let's figure that out, and I'd be happy to be a part of that and facilitate the solution to that. But I don't think listing the line item budget is really going to help anybody, and I think it will create more problems than it's worth. And the other thing to keep in mind is that if you really wanted to know exactly what was going on, not only would you need the line item budget, but you'd need to have available to you all the accounts receivable and accounts payable that goes out the door. Which we see, we can see anything, you know, when I go in and sign, you know, we sign the warrants, right, they're right there, you can see them. So if you were really trying to figure out the fat, that would be, well, you'd need this, and then you would need that, and you would put the two together, and you would see what you've got. And you know what? We get audited, so that, that, you know, we, that exercise happens by the pros, and we get to see the summary of that. So I'm really not inclined to believe that putting that particular data out there is going to be meaningful to anyone. I'm not adverse to putting it out there to solve a particular problem. If, if we think it's going to solve it, let's do it. But I'd rather have a discussion about what are the real issues that we're not addressing, and, and let's talk about them, and figure out what's a meaningful thing to disclose that's going to help the community get a better grasp of what we're trying to do, and I'm all for that.
All right, conversation going on for a while. And you mentioned the word policy, and I think it does fall into a policy decision ultimately, and thus a written policy. What are going to suggest, and see if you guys are amenable to this, is that Darrell, Alex, and the superintendent come together and discuss some of this in the effort to come up with a policy? Maybe some alternatives, possible courses of action?
I'd evaluate what other people are doing, and what the instruments they've used that are, that are, you know, more detailed than what we do, but are maybe not a particular, you know.
Can yield better understanding.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely.
So is, is that okay, folks?
I think it's a great idea. I think, I think it's, you know.
I love the idea. It worked well for those guys to do that.
If we need to massage a bar, I'm happy, I'm happy with that.
Because what we would get out of this, too, is a very deliberate process. Good conversations going back and forth, and certainly, you know, we could banter this evening, and multiple evenings. But I think sitting down, and indeed, you did flag out 1,600 line items, 35 pages, you know, whatever we may have, depends on the font you use, and then discuss. This makes sense to have this on the website every single day, 365 days a year. This doesn't, because of the way it fluctuates, way it's interacting with something else, you know, we've got a million permutations here. But if you're amenable to that, we'll ask you to do that, and determine your own suspense, because now, in essence, you've become part of the Subcommittee on Policy, at least on this particular one.
At a longer basis.
When was the last review?
And work with the superintendent. Is that okay, Kelly?
That's fine.
No, I'm being serious.
So.
E?
Speak now.
No, I'm about to. It's kind of like, you wait eight seconds.
Wait eight seconds.
You wait eight seconds, make sure. So I'm, I'm not sure, taking this as an action to further refine what we want to publish on the budget, I think is, is an appropriate action there. I'm not necessarily in favor of writing a policy in terms of how we've been moving our policies, and what we're trying to do as a board with the, with the district-level pieces here. This is, this is an operating procedure, of which there's a disagree, not necessarily consensus among the committee as to what that should look like. And I'm willing to work with Alex to come with, forward with a proposal in response to the comments that we heard tonight. And I guess that's how I'm proposing it, not to develop a new policy to insert into our policy manual.
Okay, for the purposes of this evening, I'll co-cure. I'm not convinced it shouldn't be a policy yet, but work it as a proposal, we'll see how it goes. And if, as a team, we don't think it's a policy thing, it's not a policy, and it's, as you say, an operating procedure. But that you're willing to work with the superintendent and Alex, then at least come up with these proposals, you know, for our consideration. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you. So we have a policy section D, fiscal management.
Okey-dokey. We are going to have an executive session this evening, folks, so don't regular business. Anybody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we adjourn from open session into executive session with no intention to return to open session for the purpose of collective bargaining strategy discussion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for executive session with no intention to return for collective bargaining strategy. Alex?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I got Darrell's eye. Aye. Ananmas. Thanks, folks. Really appreciate you all coming this evening.
We have so many bodies in the room. Maybe we can get the room back, back to order.
I don't think that would encourage them to come.